Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and zoom. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting January, special Planning Board meeting, January twenty second, twenty twenty five at seven thirty P. M. Notice if this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start at the ten thirty P. M. May I ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held on January twenty ninth at six thirty P. M. In person at Town Hall, and the next Planning Board Regular Meeting will be held February fifth, twenty twenty five at seven thirty P. M. Via Zoom. A roll call, please, Yamalet.
Mr. Alpert.
Here.
Ms. Cardozo.
Present.
Ms. Caffler.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Wooks.
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Councilwoman Scarpah, you're muted.
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Mayor McCartney.
Present.
You said, where you know?
Present.
Chairman Bagow.
Here. Thank you. We have a few things to adopt. I make a motion. We adopt the West Orange Planning Board Reorganization Resolution of twenty twenty five. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman's seconds on the motion, Yamalet.
Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Wooks.
Yes.
Ms. Cardozo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
You said, where you know?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow.
Yes. Resolution is adopted. I make a motion. We approve PB twenty four dash fifteen, thirty one, thirty five, West Orange LLC, the draft resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Try it again?
Uh, Mayor McCartney, I believe, was first.
Mayor McCartney, seconds. Any additions or deletions? Seeing none on the resolution, Yamalet?
Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Wooks.
Yes.
Mr. Cardozo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Where you know?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution is adopted. I recommend we adopt PB twenty four dash thirteen, IMMC Health Draft Resolution with conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mayor McCartney, seconds. On the red. Do I have any additions or deletions? Seeing none on the resolution, Yamalet?
Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Wooks.
Yes.
Ms. Cardozo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
You said, where you know?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow.
Yes. Diana, were there any variances on the Essex County Country Club or just conditions?
There was the one variance for um, the height of the pool. It was seventeen feet instead of sixteen, whatever it was.
Okay. PB twenty four dash sixteen, Essex County Country Club Draft Resolution with one variance requested and conditions. I make a motion. We adopt. Any, any additions? Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman's seconds. Do we have any additions or deletions? Seeing none on the motion, Yamalet?
Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Wooks.
Yes.
Mr. Cardozo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
You said, where you know?
Yes.
Yes. Motion is adopted. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in our professionals, please?
Uh, sure. Yes. We have uh, Mr. Hazel and Mr. Scott, and I'm looking for you on the screen. If you'd please raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're a little early. We can't start until eight with the first application because the notices that were sent out on behalf of the applicant uh, told the people that it would start at eight P. M. So therefore, we're gonna have to, I don't know what you want to do, Mr. Chairman.
We're gonna take a break till five minutes to eight, and we'll reconvene at five minutes to eight.
Okay.
Dr. Bagow, you can't vamp for, for twenty minutes?
Wait, I have an idea. We'll go on a break and then come back ten minutes to eight, and you can tell us five or ten minutes of jokes.
Okay, as long as it's not on the record. Okay.
No, we wouldn't have to be on the record. Okay, we'll see everybody in five minutes to eight.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Because they can't elope.
Nice.
Where, where does, where does a dad keep his jokes? In a database, in a database.
Oh, God.
Okay, we have four more minutes of this. Yay.
But I have to remember that one.
Okay. What did the bison say to its son when it left?
Bison. We all got it.
He's supposed to see the buffalo, no?
Um, yeah.
I'm here, I'm here on Thursday. Have the veal.
Tip your waders.
Second round's on me. Remember that. You know, I have to do something to keep the patients entertained between drilling.
You know, I think I like that technique better than when they talk to you and they, like, you're making conversation, and in conversation, we ask questions of people, and they're like, yes, you, you know, who's ever in your mouth is asking you a question. You're like, really? I can't answer this. So, yeah, I think the jokes are better.
Much better.
Do you subscribe to joke of the day?
No, I uh,
Do you make those up?
I have a list. I have things.
He is the joke of the day. Yeah.
There is, there are lots of apps about that.
I don't know how you remember them. I can't remember. Like, you'll tell that joke.
Joke of the day was not that funny, and sometimes I think, I don't know what that means. Two minutes, two minutes to wellish.
I have a question.
Sure.
Has a patient ever bit you because they were laughing at your jokes?
No, no, no. They bit me for other reasons. And I wasn't laughing, by the way. I moved, I, I used to move very quickly. I'm a little slower now, so I use a mouth chalk.
You mean like?
To what Diana was talking about, trying to answer a question.
Okay, one minute, two minutes, two minutes.
Well, it's nice to be on Zoom. Last night I had a Planning Board meeting I had to go to in Livingston, and I was home, and then I left from home, and uh, it was like the last thing I wanted to do. I'm like, okay, it's so cold out. So it's nice to be home.
You know, it's interesting. I, I've been partaking in um, going to New York City and paying the extra nine dollars, but I have to tell you, it's worth it. There is nobody. I leave here at six o'clock. I'm in there by six thirty seven. It used to take.
It's working?
Absolutely. There is very few people going into the city, even coming home tonight, only by the Stickles Bridge for about ten minutes, not an hour. So.
So the question I have is, are more people using the mass transportation like they were advocating, or they're just not going to New York?
I think they're just not going into the city or parking, they're parking up town.
They are finding alternate routes. There's a lot of that, too, on how you can still go.
So is the GW all path now because of this?
They're, they're also spending one point seven million to have two police on all of the major train uh, track, uh, trains, where they're, they're on the train itself, walking up and down the train.
Oh, okay.
So Governor Hokel just announced that yesterday. It's eight o'clock back on the record, guys.
Well, we've always been on the record. They can't turn it off once it starts, I think.
Oh, okay. I thought it's turning on. Okay, well, here we are. They got my jokes.
So now the jokes are on record.
Oh, my God.
Make an announcement that we're, we're back in session, right?
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. So the application we have before us is PB twenty four dash nineteen, the Waymaker LLC Block one oh six, Lot twenty dot oh three, Zone R one forty Eagle Ridge Way. The applicant, the Waymaker LLC proposes to undertake site work on a lot with an existing one-family dwelling. The proposed site work includes the installation of a subsurface chamber infiltration basin in the rear yard and an enhancement to previously approved stormwater seepage pit detention system for the applicant, Ms. Triolo.
Thank you, Priscilla Triolo from the law firm of Bidiger, Elias, Triolo, and Deal in Paramus, on behalf of the applicant. This evening, we are making a presentation solely with regard to This evening, we are making a presentation solely with regard to stormwater management for the single-family home at forty Eagle Ridge Way. We had previously submitted to the board an application, a letter of explanation, surveys, as well as a stormwater management report and a major site plan development plan. Both the report and the plans have been provided by Collier's Design and Engineering. Tonight, we hope to present to the board the details of the stormwater system that Collier's designed and to that end, we have the signatory of the stormwater report and the signatory on the plans, Jesse Cokely. He's a professional engineer who will be testifying to to his plans, his report, his design, and he will be available to answer any questions from the board as well as from your professionals concerning what he is proposing and what the intention is with regard to the entire project for stormwater management. Before he testifies, we have the manager, the owner of the property is an LLC. The manager of that LLC is Richard Cohen. He is here this evening and he is going to inform the board concerning the occupancy of the property, some of the property's properties, to orient the board towards the project and how everything has developed on his property. And then he will, we will turn it over to Jesse Cokely in order to address the stormwater management plan. We thank the board for starting this meeting at eight o'clock. We thank the board for scheduling a special meeting to help us expedite this. The applicant is interested in getting the project underway as soon as the board is satisfied that the proposed plan is meets the requirements of the stormwater management code provisions of the township of West Orange as his backyard is all dirt. And he's looking to get a stormwater management plant, uh, project in place that is satisfactory to the board so he can put down some sod and use his backyard before the summer comes. So with that, unless you have any questions for me, I think it would be a lot better if the board heard from Richard Cohen.
Go right ahead, Mr. Yello.
I have to swear amen.
Yep.
Mr. Cohen, do you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, you're the manager of The Waymaker LLC.
I am.
And The Waymaker LLC is the owner of forty Eagle Ridge Way.
That's correct.
Would you like to explain to the board a little bit about the history of the family who lives there and the occupancy of that property?
I would. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Councilwomen, Honorable Chairman, Honorable Vice Chairman, all the members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity for hearing this tonight and giving me the opportunity to explain what we're trying to accomplish. I moved to West Orange in nineteen ninety seven, twenty seven years ago. My wife Monica and I raised our three sons while living at the Eagle Ridge Townhomes across on the Essex Green Shopping Center. All three of our boys matriculated through the West Orange school system. Our middle son, Jordan, has been classified on the autistic spectrum and received special ed services since kindergarten through his high school graduation from West Orange High School. Jordan has always been physically active, which has a calming effect upon him and enjoyed the numerous recreational activities afforded by living at Eagle Ridge, including tennis, outdoor indoor swimming pools, playgrounds, racquetball courts, biking and rollerblading. In February of twenty twenty, Jordan represented West Orange and Essex County in the New Jersey Special Olympics Winter Games in Mountain Creek and won two gold medals in Alpine skiing. The town recognized this achievement and awarded Jordan a proclamation. Unfortunately, the pandemic and subsequent lockdowns prevented the in-person presentation of the proclamation. The pandemic had additional adverse impact upon Jordan and our family, and I'm sure on many of you. The association that ran Eagle Ridge wanted to close the indoor and outdoor pools, the outdoor playground and all the recreation areas and strongly discouraged any outdoor activities. It was time to move. We cannot live in a community that imposed these draconian measures that adversely affected the well-being of my family. However, we loved living in West Orange and limited our search to West Orange and wanted to purchase a house that either had a pool or there was no prohibition in putting in a pool. We're a family of skiers and were used to going into a hot tub after a day of skiing out west, no matter the outdoor temperature. It was our intention to use our new pool all year round. Our broker showed us this house at forty Eagle Ridge Way, a private secluded road that even after living in West Orange for twenty five years, I never knew existed. The house had a big backyard which gently sloped from the back of the house to the eastern edge of the property, which then steeply dropped into Llewellyn Park. The backyard would be ideal for a new swimming pool with a big lawn for other recreational activities. For estate planning purposes, we formed an LLC, The Waymaker LLC. My wife coined the name, believing it was the Lord's grace that we were able to purchase the property. I am the manager of the LLC and trust for the benefit of my wife and children and other members. We moved from the Eagle Ridge Townhouses into forty Eagle Ridge Way in May of twenty one. We started planning and designing the pool and the poolhouse. My objective has always been to build a pool and a poolhouse for my family and in compliance with all ordinances. I hired architects, multiple engineers, licensed contractors, and obtained permits to do just that. After moving in, we retained a licensed landscape architect, Brian Stratton, also known as the Pool Artist, to design the pool. While we knew we also wanted a cabana, the primary emphasis and focus was on the pool. We filed the drawings and a site plan in twenty twenty one and obtained our building permit to commence construction. Our property lies on bedrock and we needed an experienced site contractor to properly perform the excavation for the pool and future poolhouse. And we were referred to Grabowski Construction Corp., a three-generation local business based in West Orange, who was familiar with our property and the neighboring environs. Of course, construction always takes longer than anyone says it will and the excavation approximately a year from the summer of twenty one through the summer of twenty two. Paul Grabowski and his family were in some ways magical to watch how they worked. While excavating, they created a temporary berm about five to ten feet from the eastern edge and seeded it, which then acted like a moat preventing any water from the excavation and construction from going down the mountain into Llewellyn Park. During this excavation and clearing of underbrush, Grabowski uncovered a historical pathway, likely from the Lenape Indian Tribe, leading up from Llewellyn Park and proceeding northward to the top of forty's backyard and continuing northward to thirty eight Eagle Ridge Way. There was also uncovered boulders creating a rudimentary support for this path that were mishmashed together. During this excavation, we were working with a licensed architect to develop the plans for the poolhouse and brought on Abicon Management licensed contractors. Given the elevation levels of the lower level of the poolhouse, along with the amount of bedrock, it became clear that the original location of seepage tanks, as set forth in the landscape architect's original site plan, was not going to work. Accordingly, at the urging of Grabowski and Abicon Management, we retained a professional engineer to review and design a stormwater plan to meet our needs and prevent runoff from our site. The Waymaker retained Materazzo Engineering to review and design a stormwater system along with drainage and grading plants. I instructed Materazzo to over-design the system to ensure both the drainage will work no matter how strong a storm happens and we arrest the runoff from our improvements. In early March of twenty twenty three, we submitted to the township the Materazzo-designed stormwater system drainage and grading plans. The submission was reviewed by now municipal engineer Zebith Carballo and a couple of days later, we received a red-stamped builder copy was released to our contractor. We told Grabowski to go to work and gave him the approved plans. It's important to note that no one said at that time, you have or will disturb more than an acre and have to make an additional submission. Grabowski spent the next seven to nine months following the Materazzo-approved plans and installed a ten-tank, ten-tank seepage pit and tied in the installed drain lines from the simultaneously proceeding construction of the poolhouse and the pool. West Orange DPW reviewed, inspected, and approved the installed seepage pit, the boulder wall. While clearing the underbrush, Grabowski uncovered a rudimentary boulder wall that was not previously visible. In order to install the approved seepage tanks in the location set forth in our Materazzo plans, Grabowski first had to move aside this prior boulder wall, temporarily level a portion of the lot by a foot or two, about fourteen feet offset from the eastern property line in order to have his heavy equipment stabilized to lift and install the seepage tanks. After they were installed, Grabowski began to restore the boulder wall in a secure fashion with the intent that it be no higher than four feet at its highest and most of the height would be two to four feet. The currently higher boulder wall was temporary shoring necessary to keep in place and stabilize the newly installed seepage tanks. The pool that's been installed has an infinity edge looking eastward and it would defeat the purpose of an infinity edge if any portion of the boulder wall was in the view corridors looking east over the infinity edge. Had the township not ordered work on the boulder wall to stop in December of twenty twenty three and Grabowski been allowed to complete his work, the finished boulder wall would be in only a small section, four feet high, with the great majority of it running from one and a half feet to four feet. I will defer to our engineers and colleagues to describe the current plan to reduce the height of the boulder wall to even smaller heights utilizing a two-tiered system. There was no stop work order on the pool and poolhouse and work continued and numerous inspections were made and approved. Work has been completed and we are awaiting final inspections. The drainage ditch. When we moved to forty Eagle Ridge Way, there was a pre-existing drainage ditch running between forty and forty-two Eagle Ridge Way and at the eastern end, the back of the property, it made a forty-five degree left turn and then flew over the mountain into Llewellyn Park. At the end of the ditch, right before it flies over the mountain, there were two round circular clay pipes that outflowed at the top of the mountain onto twenty-nine Mountain Avenue in Llewellyn Park. Water enters that drainage ditch upstream on Eagle Ridge Way from multiple sources. Directly across from forty and forty-two Eagle Ridge Way is a wooded parcel owned by the Crystal Point Condominium Association that collects runoff from upstream townhomes that are part of the Crystal Point condominium. There is a ditch within that wooded parcel with an outflow HPE pipe that originates in the Crystal Point parcel, goes underneath Eagle Ridge Way and daylights on the forty Eagle Ridge Way side into the drainage ditch. In addition, at that same point of daylight, in the drainage ditch, there's a concrete pipe that runs from the stormwater drains that flow southward along Eagle Ridge Way from Bowlin Drive approximately four hundred feet away. There is another wooded parcel owned by Crystal Point opposite thirty-eight Eagle Ridge Way that abuts Eagle Ridge Way and has a, its own HP pipe from that wooded parcel into the stormwater basin drains on Eagle Ridge Way that then flows south into the drainage ditch that then proceeds east and ultimately down into Llewellyn Park. Since moving into forty Eagle Ridge Way in May of twenty twenty one, I have personally observed that during storms, both wooded parcels owned by Crystal Point would overflow and flood the Eagle Ridge road grade and would take days before the water ascended and flow down the drainage ditch. The flooding in the Crystal Point parcel rotted out the roots on some trees at the perimeter of their parcel and last year, a falling tree narrowly missed my son walking by by seconds. The Crystal Point Association then removed the rotting trees and cleaned out the debris and leaves in the ditch, leading to those pipes that go under Eagle Ridge Way from their parcel. And since then, Eagle Ridge Way has not flooded. In November of twenty twenty three, Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District inspectors made several visits to the site and directed our GC Abicon's project manager to cause the drainage ditch to be cleared of debris and riprap added to the ditch. The SCD issued a deficiency notice to me memorializing this directive. We then directed Grabowski to clean the debris and add riprap, which was done in December of twenty twenty three. The replacement of the two pre-existing twin twelve-inch pipes. Excuse me. As Grabowski cleaned the ditch, moving from the front of forty Eagle Ridge Way to the back, that is west to east, he came upon the twin twelve-inch pipes that were there historically at the end, at the eastern of the ditch before it headed down the mountain. These pipes were severely damaged and cavitated in multiple areas where water flowed through them, under them, and around them. Grabowski took the SCD direction to clean debris to include replacing the broken pipes, which was done with a new thirty-six inch concrete elliptical pipe. The use of an elliptical pipe was explained to me that instead of water gushing out of circular twelve-inch pipes like a fire hose, it would come out in slower sheets mitigating any erosion. With the Crystal Point cleaning of their parcels and the SEC direction to clean out the ditch, install riprap and the replacement of the cavitated pipes, the upstream water from Crystal Point and Eagle Ridge Way, along with increased drains, are flowing down the drainage ditch without the previous impediments. Also, there's a tributary path flowing south to north into the replacement concrete pipe from the narrow Llewellyn Park parcel that runs at the top of the mountain behind forty-two Eagle Ridge Way and then down into Llewellyn Park. So behind forty-two Eagle Ridge Way at the top of the mountain, there's this narrow parcel owned by the trustees of Llewellyn Park that fifteen feet, five feet, ten feet, but it's pitched into that same drainage ditch and it continues down the mountain, uh, onto Mountain Avenue. What has been repeatedly inspected and confirmed by SCD in writing is quote, H E P S C D has not observed overflow from the infiltration system during our inspections, close quote. This was in an April tenth twenty four email from the district manager to Chief Abbott and other township officials. The newly installed seepage system, the ten-tank system, is working as intended and no water, even during storms, have been observed coming from the emergency overflow located three feet north of the replacement concrete pipe outflow. Mark the last section here. The output flow control structure. Notwithstanding that the township approved and inspected the functioning seepage tank system and none of the approved work, the poolhouse and the pool was causing runoff into the ditch. As an interim measure, while our, while Collier's was developing the major site development stormwater plans, over this past summer, Collier's proposed to install an output flow control system that would in effect turn the thirty-six inch concrete elliptical pipe into a twin ten-inch, not twelve- into a twin ten-inch, not twelve-inch circular system, but ten inches smaller than the prior twelve inches, thereby slowing the flow of water down the ditch to a level but would have been if the two twelve-inch circular pipes had simply been replaced. The town rejected this proposal and directed Colliers to continue working on the major site plan. Again, I will defer to the engineers at Colliers, but we have included this output flow control, control structure, not because it is required under major site plan requirements, as we are not discharging runoff into the ditch, but because we had previously offered it. And in the spirit of twenty-seven-year residents of West Orange, who plan and living here the rest of our lives, we want peace amongst our neighbors and trying to help the situation for something that we did not cause. As I understand that the proposed site plan substantially improved, improves upon the previously approved Materazzo plan by now capturing runoff from blades of grass, adding new storm tech chambers and curtain drains, as well as replacing the current impervious asphalt driveway with a smaller pervious paver driveway along with substantial new landscaping. I'll now pass the microphone to our engineers unless there are any questions.
Okay, um. Do any members of the board have any questions? Vice Chairman Guarino? Vice Chairman Guarino?
No, I'm not.
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney.
Mr. Cohen, thank you. Your home sounds magnificent. Um, I had a question about the infinity pool at the edge of the eastern part of your property. Uh, we do have a steep slope ordinance. Would that take effect uh, with that pool at the edge of the property?
So, so the, the pool is not at the edge of the property. There's I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
It was not at the edge. There's approximately a hundred feet from the infinity edge to the eastern edge of the, of the property, if not more.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Scarp, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Alper.
Um, the boulder wall is supposed to just be temporary?
The currently existing boulder wall is supposed to be temporary. Uh, it acted as temporary shoring to install the approved seepage tanks. It was going to be reduced in size. Under the new proposed plan, it's going to be reduced further in size by making it two tiers.
Okay, and its current height is?
So, the current height ranges anywhere from one and a half feet to ten feet at its highest. And one of the reasons it's ten feet at its highest is because on the other side, the downhill side, Grabowski had to level the path in order to put his equipment to, uh, install the seepage tanks. So they were going to restore that side to original grade and then remove the top course, thereby reducing the height of the boulder wall. And now, and now the current proposal is to do that in two tiers to make it even smaller. So my, I believe, and again, I'll let Colliers insert exactly, but I think the highest portion is three, three and a half feet for each tier. And that's only a small portion of it, because as it goes the course along the backyard, it slopes, and at some points, it's only one and a half feet high.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions?
Um, no questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Codoza, do you have any questions?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Capra, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of questions. Um, thank you, Mr. Cohen, for, um, sharing your story with us. Uh, have you received complaints from the, uh, property owner at twenty-nine Mountain Avenue in Llewellyn Park?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Um, and did you receive more complaint? I, uh, do you know if there's been impact from that, that thirty-six-inch pipe that was put in? Or, I mean, if, if the complaints were related to that or not?
I can't, uh, I'm not an engineer, so I can't say what the complaints are related to, uh, whether it's to a thirty-six-inch pipe, whether to Crystal Point cleaning out their drain, whether to it raining more. I can't pinpoint for you what it is. I know the complaint is related to water coming, coming down. And again, one of our, in our efforts to be good neighbors, I've reached out to the Kessler's to meet with them. Um, we have proposed this outfit, control, outflow control structure that will reduce the, uh, flow of the water in that ditch, notwithstanding it's not coming from our improvements on our lot.
Yeah, thank you for describing that. And, um, one more question regarding the, the seepage system that's, that was already installed. Is that, is it concrete? Or are you able to describe? Or maybe it could be a question for Colliers too, if that's better.
I could show you a picture if you'd like.
Yeah, that, that'd be great. I don't know. Is there a way to do that?
Can I share my screen?
I, that's acceptable, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's great.
Okay, so what you see here is the ten-tank system, which are really twenty tanks, because they're like double height. This was the fourteen-foot offset and Grabowski's, uh, from the property line. So that, that silt fence in the background is the property line. This was the, the, the path. They had to move the boulders aside. They put rock and stone. They installed all these tanks. Um, DPD inspected it. It was all covered. Here's, here's on the truck before it got there. So, does that help you or?
It does. Yes, thank you very much. That's it, that's it for my questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Cohen?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Cohen at this time?
Uh, no question, uh, just a, a request. If, uh, Mr. Cohen could, uh, provide that summary that he read, that would be great because it does kind of detail, uh, and give a timeline as to all of the different things that took place. Now, I think that would be helpful in us, uh, you know, coming up with a resolution, um, for this project.
Mr. Cohen, is that acceptable?
Uh, um, Priscilla, do any reason not to? I mean, these were my notes. I mean, I added a little bit to it, but it was ninety-five percent there. I hope I didn't look like I was reading it too much.
No, no, you did a great job.
It was, it's my understanding that this meeting is being recorded, so we can get a transcript to you, Mr. Scott.
Okay, that would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Cohen on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Cohen's testimony? Mr. Simon.
Yes, um, good evening. Um, let me just quickly, uh, introduce myself. Hopefully you can hear me. My name is Rob Simon. I am an attorney with Herald Law in Warren, New Jersey. I am here on behalf of, uh, Llewellyn Park and its, uh, committee of managers. I am also, uh, was born and bred in, uh, in West Orange. My wife and I went to Mountain High School and very familiar with the area. Um, so, Mr. Cohen, um, thank you for your, uh, for your testimony. A couple of questions. You said you're not an engineer. You're not, you're not any form of engineer, correct? You're not a, a civil engineer, mechanical engineer or other, correct?
I, I own and develop restaurants. Um, so yes, I'm not an engineer.
Okay. And, um, you referred in your narrative, uh, that where you read from your notes to, um, a bunch of correspondence and, and related data. Um, was that information submitted to the board as part of this application, to your knowledge?
I would have to, uh, ask my attorney exactly what was submitted, but if there's something that I referred to that you would like the references to, I have no objections to producing that.
Yeah, well, maybe when we see the transcript, uh, we can be more specific and ask you for some specific, uh, requests.
Um, may I, may I just respond, Mr. Simon? Anything that you would like to see, we will provide, and we can represent that every single thing that Mr. Cohen represented when he was testifying has been submitted to West Orange, not to this planning board, because it's not really, um, the documents weren't relevant to the stormwater application, but we have submitted them directly to West Orange, and we'd be pleased to send them to you as well.
Uh, that'd be great. Thank you, Priscilla. Then I would request all those documents, uh, to the extent. That'd be fantastic, to the extent that they have not been submitted to the board as part of this application. Great, thank you for that. Um, Mr. Cohen, um, are you familiar with your, um, title commitment or title search for, for this property?
In a high-level way when it was purchased, yes.
Um, do you recall whether, um, any ease, uh, drainage easements or related easements, um, encumber your property that are of record?
My only recollection is that I believe the original survey or the seller, copy of the seller's survey indicated the drainage ditch that runs between forty and forty-two.
Right, so, um, and I, I do, and I'm going to apologize to the board upfront, just because I just got retained uh, literally a few days ago on this. Um, but I did have an opportunity, uh, thanks to all the links on the agenda to review the surveys that were submitted in connection with this application. There's an, what I'm going to call an Omlin survey, uh, from two thousand and twenty-four, that's May of two thousand and twenty-four. And I believe that there was a prior, uh, what we'll call the Robert survey from February of two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Cohen, are you familiar with both of those surveys, sir?
Excuse me, one second, Mr. Simon. Uh, Mr. McGovern, shouldn't that be, uh, provided for the board secretary and labeled?
I think he's talking about documents that were submitted to the board, are you not, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, Dr. Backoff, I'm just talking about documents that are of record as part of this planning work proceeding, that I believe the applicant submitted themselves.
Are the, is it attached to the stormwater management report? Is that where the surveys are?
Um, I, I believe actually, Diana, there, there, they have separate links to them.
Okay.
On the agenda.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Simon. Go right ahead.
Yeah, no worries.
Do we want to share the screen, Chairman?
Yeah, I don't.
They are on the agenda, but do you want to share the screen?
Yeah, I'm not in a position right now to, to, to share the screen, just because I don't have, uh, those documents saved, Mayor. I'm just looking at, because I'm looking at paper copies.
Okay, go, go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Cohen, um, are, are you familiar with both the Robert survey and the Omlin and Ostracorn survey?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask you if you could just explain to him what you mean by familiar. He's not an engineer or a surveyor, and I'm sure he knows that he received the documents. So if you could just be clear when you ask the question.
Are you aware, Mr. Cohen, as to whether Omlin and Ostracorn prepared a survey at your direction dated approximately May of two thousand and twenty-four?
I am aware they prepared a survey. I don't know if it was at my direction. I know the town's attorney was insisting on Asbills, what they called Asbills, for something that's under construction, and I believe that's what that survey related to.
Are you
I can, I believe that, uh, and I, I just need to correct him again. He is not a surveyor. I believe that Omlin and Ostracorn survey was related to HEP SCD.
Oh, that's right.
Requirement. They wanted, um, HEP SCD asked for it, and Omlin and Ostracorn was responding to those requirements.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, Mr. Cohen, are you aware whether, um, Robert's Engineering Group prepared a survey for forty Eagle Ridge Way uh, dated approximately February of two thousand and twenty-one?
Yes, I believe that's when we were purchasing the property, um, or shortly before, after that.
And the, um, drainage ditch that you're referring to, um, is that a ditch that runs approximately along the western side of your property, uh, between forty Eagle Ridge Way and forty-two Eagle Ridge Way?
Between four, yes, my recollection is the drainage ditch runs between forty and forty-two.
And I, and I know you're not an engineer, nor are you a surveyor, but because you mentioned the drainage ditch during your direct testimony, I'm going to ask you, do you know why on the two thousand and twenty-one Robert survey, the drainage ditch is located in a different location, namely mostly on forty-two Eagle Ridge Way, while the Omlin and Ostracorn survey from two thousand and twenty-four shows the drainage ditch as essentially a budding, um, forty Eagle Ridge Way and forty-two Eagle Ridge Way. Do you have any information on that whatsoever? I understand he's not a surveyor and engineer. I was asking him because he testified to it in his direct.
Oh, he testified to the fact that there's a ditch between the properties.
Right. That's what I'm asking him about. I'm asking him whether he has
I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying anything. I'm just agreeing with you.
Mr. Cohen.
No, I answered it. I, I said I do not know why, if any, if there's a variance between the two or not. My understanding is the ditch always ran between forty and forty-two.
And, um, the what, you know, I, I, I took a look at these proper, at these properties. Um, it looks like that there's construction activity going on at, at forty-two, including in the area
I'm going to direct Mr. Cohen not to answer any questions concerning forty-two. He is the manager of the Waymaker LLC, the owner of forty Eagle Ridge Way. Whatever is going on at forty-two is not subject to this discussion.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, it, again,
They, they pay me a lot of money. No, they don't. Okay, so.
Where are you?
Let me do, let me do this. Okay.
There you are. I'm sorry.
Here I am. Hi, Mr. Simon, we're going to focus on forty. We're not going to forty-two.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just make a proffer on that regarding?
I'm going to refer that to, uh, Ms. McGovern.
I think we can hear the rationale as to why he's bringing it up. Sure.
Okay. I'll, I'll hear the rationale.
So, in any land development application, especially one that deals with stormwater management, um, one needs to take into consideration not just the property in question, and it states this in section twenty-nine of your, uh, ordinance, twenty-five dash twenty-nine, um, but surrounding properties. And it is very clear, crystal clear, no pun intended, or pun intended, that there is construction activity currently occurring at forty-two as there is and was construction activity at forty. And it appears that the construction activity is somewhat related. And the question
We're going to stop right there. So, somewhat related, we don't know how much related, uh, and the, and the issue is that the applicant is not talking about that site. I, I want to keep this as clean as possible. I understand where you're going, and I don't want to go through that door, because the applicant didn't. And yes, there, there may be something going on at that, at that site, but how it's related or causally related, we don't know. We're going to have to wait to see if our engineers uh, say anything about that. Ms. McGovern, you want to weigh in on this?
I, I think my bigger problem is this person, this, the witness isn't, is a lay witness, and I think that that is more properly directed at the engineer, um, but I
I can certainly ask the engineer.
Yeah, thank you.
I think, I agree. That would, that would be more appropriate there, and I'd appreciate that. So if you have more, go right ahead, please, uh, Mr. Simon.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with regard to this uh, pipe, that this thirty-six-inch pipe, um, do you know when that pipe was first installed?
I believe it was installed shortly after SCD inspected in November of twenty-three. So I believe it was installed either at the end of November or early December. I don't have the exact dates, but that's my recollection, and it was in response to the uh S C S C D direction.
Were there any um approvals or certificates issued in by any governmental agency, S C D, West Orange, anyone in connection with that pipe installation, to your knowledge?
Uh, to my knowledge, it was a replacement for the pre-existing circular pipes. And I believe there was directives, I don't remember from who, I think it was S C D, to sh- to show that pipe on an updated S C D drawing.
Um, and do you know why, um, first of all, are you aware that that pipe has been discharging water at a, I'm gonna characterize it as a at a regular rate. I'm sure others will describe it differently. Um, as recently as this past week during these uh below freezing temperatures, are you aware of that?
Well, I can only speculate, but I can tell you um that as of about four hours ago, a bunch of trucks came down Forty Eagle Ridge Way. And apparently, there's a water main break in the Crystal Point parcel opposite forty and forty-two that goes right into that ditch. So if I look out my window, those trucks are there today. So I have no idea how long that water main break has been. But as a layperson and using my logic and just looking out my window from where I am right now, I could see them. And I'm told there's a water main break there. So perhaps that's a a source of this.
When residents of Llewellyn Park, um, you testified um earlier have raised concerns uh to you or brought to your attention concerns regarding one or water runoff from your property, correct? They've communicated with you, correct?
Just one resident has communicated with me.
Um, did you ask your engineer about those water complaints?
I have to object that. I don't know what you're asking him.
He he testified in his direct exam in his direct testimony that um he received complaints. And he said, well, I'm I'm not an engineer. He said, I'm not an engineer, so I can't speculate. This is during his direct. And I'm asking him on cross whether he asked his engineer about those complaints.
I didn't ask, I don't recall asking my engineer. I did ask Paul Grabowski. And I did speak to the senior investigators or inspectors from S C D who came to the property, and I was outside with them in a pouring storm. And they saw the water going at a pretty good clip down that drainage ditch. And they also saw the emergency outflow to the seepage tank system that was dry, that nothing was coming out of that. And they said to me, it's work, your system is working as intended. The the water that's going down the mountain is not coming from what we installed or our improvements. In a conversation, one of more conversations with with Paul Grabowski, he's he asked for permission to go down and to to the twenty-nine mountain to Kessler's property to look at it. They had a bunch of trees crossing the ditch as it crosses their property. And he was going to help them out, and I don't know what that meant uh cleaning out the debris in their ditch so it wouldn't flood into their property, and it would continue to the storm basin another eight hundred feet further downstream to Mountain Avenue, but that offer was refused.
Um, in connection with your construction that you testified to in your direct examination, um, do you recall how many uh mature trees were removed from your property?
From my property?
Yes, sir.
There was two dead and dying trees at the front of forty, near the border of thirty-eight that um I don't I wouldn't say it was in connection with the property. We didn't want the trees to fall on the new improvements. And one was dropping branch, heavy branches on the driveway. And I applied for permits to the town, received them, and hired a licensed tree contractor to remove those two trees.
No, no other trees other than those two, Mr. Cohen?
No.
And um, when you talk to Mr. Grabowski or any of your engineers, was there any discussion about steep slope disturbance on your property, sir?
There was no discussion about steep slope. The steep slope really starts from the boundary line between forty and twenty-nine mountain. I mean, it's a gentle slope leading up to that, a little bit. I guess a little bit steeper. Again, I'm not an engineer, so I can't give you the percentages. But if you're standing at the boundary line and looking eastward into Llewellyn Park, it was pretty steep. Like, I'm a I'm a skier, and that would be a black diamond looking down at that uh mountain from that point forward. But that was not our property. I mean, we weren't doing work on that there.
Right. Um, do you know whether any of your engineers ever performed um a steep slope analysis?
I don't know if the engineers did. I believe when we initially applied for the pool permit back in twenty-one, we provided a steep slope analysis.
I would just ask uh Brazil if we can get a copy of that. That would be helpful. Thank you.
We can find it.
Yeah. Um. Okay, I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Appreciate your time. Pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Cohen on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have a a few. Michael DeCheser, please state your name and address for the record.
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Hi, um, Michael DeChesser. I live at thirty-five Mountain Avenue. Um, I live directly below twenty-nine Mountain Avenue. And I have the uh, you know, the quote-unquote brook running along um my property line between me, uh Kessler and um uh and Ryan Shinman. So um my my questions are uh regarding the steep slope. Question number one, when the approvals were were done, I mean, was was that approval subject to a steep slope?
This is a question from me.
Question for anybody who can answer it.
Well, I I think right now you, well, I know right now you're asking Mr. Cohen questions on his testimony. And he did he did not testify as to steep slope, so continue, please.
Okay, when when I'm curious when the trees were removed along the property line, how many trees were removed? And did he have permits to remove those trees?
So when you say the property line, we didn't remove any trees between Forty Eagle Ridge Ridge Way or twenty-nine Mountain Avenue. The trees that I was referencing that had the permits, it was between forty and thirty-eight to close to the the middle and 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 front of Forty Eagle Ridge Way.
How many how many trees roughly? I'm sorry?
Two.
Just two?
Yes, sir.
Um, okay. The 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 property uh at the at the property line adjoining Kessler seems like that whole line, which is really the New York skyline, was lowered uh a certain degree. Do you can you talk about that?
So I think there was a little bit of a misimpression and misunderstanding by the Kesslers that I tried to clear up recently. So when Grabowski was doing the excavation, being the experienced contractor he is, he took extraordinary steps that before a new stormwater system was put in. And he was doing the excavation to prevent water from running down the mountain into Llewellyn Park. And so he excavated, he created a berm about ten feet before that property line between um the Kesslers and and Forty Eagle Ridge Way. And that berm was probably about eight, ten feet high, and he seeded it with with grass and then worked inward towards the main house doing the excavation. So that berm acted as a moat. And I believe it was during the summer of twenty-two when the Kesslers saw Grabowski's equipment, and they thought that we were on their property line. I invited them to come up and see for themselves that they're not. They came up, we stood, we on that berm itself, and they could see the moat, and they could see everything. That berm was a temporary eight to ten feet higher than the pre-existing grade. When the storm system was installed, the tentake system was installed, and all the lines were tied in, the berm was removed. So if you're looking at it from your perspective at the bottom of the mountain, and you previously saw for a year eight to ten feet higher, which was a temporary berm that had been hay seeded over, and now it's gone, I could understand how someone from looking at that, like a Rashomon story, has the perspective that the line was changed. So that would be the best way I could explain that to you.
Thank you. Um, I I just, I, you know, from my perspective, um you know, I've I've been up uh along Llewellyn Park's property, and my son is a at yeah, a drone uh drone uh advocate, you know, it looks as though
Sir, don't, don't.
The property line has been lowered and trees were removed.
Sir, I I need you to ask a question. You're testifying now, so you can ask a question, please.
Did you deviate from the existing plans that you originally got to do the construction and the uh related work?
Grabowski was following the Materazzo approved plans that were approved in March of two thousand twenty-three. So to my knowledge, there was no deviation.
Okay, so wh- why did the township require you to provide as-bills uh last year, or maybe it was early in uh early two thousand twenty-four? Because it seemed like you deviated from your approved plan. Why did they require you to provide as-bills?
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, okay.
Mr. Creolo, okay, Mr. Mr. DeChesser, please don't testify. You can ask him a question. Okay, ask the question. Don't add anything into the question, please.
I have no more questions.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public have a question for Mr. Cohen on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have a couple of more. Ryan's iPhone, please state your name and address for the record.
This is Ryan Shinman from forty-five Mountain Avenue, which is also directly below the property, and that's adjacent to Mr. DeChester as well as Mr. Kessler. So I I joined both their properties, and I'm on the other side of the ditch.
And, okay, ask a question.
Do you, did you realize that the trees that were cut down since you've moved in have fallen over onto forty-five Mountain Avenue's property legitimately? Probably more than ten to fifteen trees from your property falling onto my property.
So if I understand the geography correctly, your property is behind forty-two Eagle Ridge Way. And before you get to your property, there is a strip of property owned by the trustees of Llewellyn Park. No trees, to my knowledge, were knocked down to your property, and I don't even know how they would get to your property. And I understand we're only talking about forty today, and I don't think you, like you said, you're on the other side of the ditch. You're on the.
I'm on both sides. Sorry, sir. I'm on both sides of the ditch.
Oh, okay.
Because my property actually curves underneath yours as well.
Okay, I thought the Kesslers were.
I own I I own part of that property up there.
Okay, to my understanding, no trees from our property fell onto your property. And this is the first I'm hearing that allegation.
Do you also, for my second question, because I'm I'm not allowed to make comments, do you also realize that the water runoff from the construction that you created? And I've lived in the park since two thousand and one, and I've had a property, this is a famous property from eighteen fifty-six called the Terraces that should now be called the Mudslides, because since the property was done and the blasting was done over the past few summers, that not only have rocks fallen onto my property.
Mr. Chairman, this is.
But wait, no, no, I'm asking a question. Not only have rocks fallen on my property, but do you realize the amount of water that I never had flooding before has flooded all the way down to the mountain into my basement, causing hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage?
Stop right there, sir, sir. You can.
As a question, is he aware of the water situation that went on forty-five Mountain Avenue?
That's a good question.
Not just the Kesslers.
Sir, that's a great question. Stop right there. Okay, Mr. Cohen, can you answer that question?
I am unaware of the water situation as asked by Mr. Shinman.
So no, no one's ever brought it to your attention, the water situation flowing onto forty-five Mountain Avenue below below the the line? Correct?
Correct.
I I have another quick question. Did anybody from Llewellyn Park inquire to you about using dynamite or explosives blasting on your property, which would cause rocks to fall on both Mr. Kessler and my property at forty-five Mountain using blasting techniques that shook not only the mountain behind me on my ground?
Sir, sir, sir.
I'm asking if he's aware.
You're you're testifying. You're gonna stop with the blasting. Let him answer about blasting, okay?
Yes. Are you aware that the blasting, the damage that was caused?
I'm not aware of any damage that was caused. I am aware that Grabowski obtained any permits required. I'm told by Grabowski that it was not dynamite, that it was another type of explosive that is used for excavation and contained. I'm also aware and witnessed him put seismographs adjacent to the property to measure the impact of any blasting. And this is the first that I'm hearing about any impact upon any property from any blasting.
So you're not aware that it shattered also pipes from the mountain leading leading into forty-five Mountain that broke and caused hundreds of thousands of damage? Nobody asked. Nobody, nobody made you aware?
Stop with the broken pipes, sir.
Why? It's a question. Is he aware that the blasting caused broken pipes on forty-five Mountain Avenue?
I have to object. He's making a conclusion and a question. It's it's.
I have I have survey reports that can be submitted.
I I.
Okay.
It's.
Mr. Creolo, eh, okay. So the question is, are you aware of any damage to pipes from blasting? It's a yes or no question.
No, I am not aware.
Excellent. Done. Next, sir.
The next question I can ask?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
So have you been contacted? I just want to be sure. The only person that you're aware of any damage anywhere in Llewellyn Park that you've been told was to Mr. Kessler's property? Not not the hearse's.
Question.
Why?
Because he never said. No, you asked if.
I apologize. I'm not a lawyer. So are you aware that other than Mr. Kessler's that there is proposed damage to many other people in the park besides Mr. Kessler from the work that you've done?
I object. We are here for a site plan application. I object. We are here for a site plan application to install a stormwater drainage system. The work has not happened on the stormwater drainage system yet.
Uh, which, uh, uh, again, I'm I'm not an engineer as well. But the damage over the past two years that the construction has done to the water. And to many people's properties.
Mister Chairman, that is not before the board.
Mister Creolo, stop. You're you're all, you're testifying, no testifying. Miss McGovern, did Mister Cohen testify to a beginnings of a stormwater management system already? Where there was Grabowski started doing those double-high ten things?
So, so it wasn't clear to me. I mean, he did talk about Grabowski did so, did installation. And that since the installation, there's been no problems. So there was testimony that there was installation of. Of those big cement things. We saw the pictures, so. I think the question has to do with how those were installed, if there was blasting going on, I guess.
We could ask that question, Mister Cohen. Did Mister Grabowski have to do any blasting techniques? To install the stormwater seepage fits?
No, he did not.
Okay, there we go.
Fair enough.
And with my, my last seven seventeen seconds. I I would say it's another comment, which is I'm all in favor of improvement in West Orange. And I'm happy of the improvements people are making, as long as it doesn't cause hundreds of thousands of damage. I love the fact that you're building West Orange. I loved your story. I hope you build beautiful houses, beautiful pools, but not at the expense of 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 your neighbors. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mister Conan's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Andy Kessler. Hang on one second. State your name and address for the record. You need to unmute?
Thank you. Andy Kessler, twenty-nine Mountain Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, uh, doctor. Hello, 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 Richard. It's Andy Kessler. I just want to ask some questions to see if we can get the some, some. Some facts that maybe could read upon. When you began your work on your project. Did you uh, work all the way up to where our uh, our property line meets? Between your property and my property at the peak of the mountain?
Unless you are speaking concerning the stormwater seepage fits, is that what you're referring to?
I'm asking questions that relate to his testimony, so I think it's important.
His testimony was that stormwater seepage fits were put in.
He also testified he installed a pool at a poolhouse.
And I understand, Mr. Creola, why you're breaking out everybody every time. I'm just trying to ask Richard some questions. We'll find to get some facts down. I'll ask it in a form of a question.
Mister Kessler, let me, let me just clarify things. So as as a patient, as a patient, as a person testifies. You can ask questions about their testimony. We give, I do give you some latitude to move a little bit outside that. But going way far out that we can't do that, there will be other people testifying that these questions may be more appropriate for. So we're gonna try and work to keep the record, we're gonna try and work between myself and the board attorney. And Mr. Creolo to keep the record clear as possible in everybody's best interest.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do the best I can to accommodate you on that, sir. I understand exactly what you're saying.
Thank you, sir. Go right ahead.
So I just want to understand, Richard, that that factually, did you, did you do your work? Uh, all the way up to where our, our line butts each other?
So Andy, if you recall, um, you know, at some point, you thought. The workers were working on your, on your side of the property line. And one of the things that we did that I believe was required and or Grabowski suggested. Was put a silt fence on the property line. And I think you, you at one point said it was six inches over on your property line and it was online. And I was like, you know, there's rocks there. The idea of the silt fence was trying to prevent any runoff onto your property. So if I was three, four inches over, it was done to protect your property. Then the the work that was done was for the installation of the seepage tank. And that work was. Ten to fifteen feet offset west of the property line. The, the Grabowski's excavators needed to sit on that ten to fourteen feet. In order to lift the seepage tanks into the pit that they had excavated, so.
But your, but your work, you can agree that your work was, was up to your property line. Which abutted my property line.
It's not what he said.
I believe he did. I asked, I'm asking him.
He's asking. It's a yes, no question.
Okay, I I I I'm sorry, Mister Chairman. I'd love to answer yes, no, but I'm not sure because I'm not a contractor either, but to work safely.
The, let, let me, let me rephrase the question, because I, I, it was, that wasn't like a trick question. It wasn't done to trick. I just wanted to make a record that you worked from your property line into your property towards your, towards, towards your pool. Did you remove all the growth from your property line? Into your property to accommodate your project?
May we please get a clarification on what growth is?
I think it's a well-known word. I don't think it needs a clarification.
For the record, can we agree it's vegetation and or trees? Would that be acceptable?
Trees, growth, shrubbery, vegetation.
Vegetation and or trees. It's a yes, no, or I don't know, Mister Cohen.
Okay, I, I don't know. I've, Grabowski described it as underbrush that he.
Oh, that's a good, that's a good word. I like underbrush. That's fine. Did you remove all of the underbrush from your property line at the peak of the mountain going towards your house all the way?
If you know.
If he knows.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm thinking about, yes?
Of course. My God, okay. And the growth that's still there is from my property line to the peak. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that peak is approximately twenty feet from the top of the mountain? Over the mountain, about approximately, okay?
You mean, you mean.
The, the growth still is there, about twenty, twenty feet from the top of the mountain.
I think it's less than twenty feet.
Okay, okay, I'm not, I'm not measuring it right now. Okay, okay. So all that growth is, 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 is gone, okay? Now, um, you indicated. That you were aware that. Water was going down. The mountain at twenty-nine. Prior to your doing your project. Is, is, am I correct? Is that what you testified to?
Well, I don't know if I testified to that, but yes, that was my understanding.
How, how, how did you know that? Were you, did you observe that? Did you?
Yes, yes, I observed it. Before work got started, I walked the property. I was excited about the property. I walked all over the backyard. I even had video of it before the work started showing water going down the ditch down to twenty-nine. Uh, past the old broken.
You, do you still have that video?
Yes.
Okay, can you produce that to, uh, to me?
I will review it and advise.
Sir, Mister Castro, this is outside of the planning board. I would recommend that Mister Cohen speak with Mister Creolo. And they can address this at a later date.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and, and so you're, you're aware that, um, we have. During, during your, your project that I myself has advised. Members of the town that water flow. Down the mountain in streams and velocity that has happened since your construction.
I'm gonna stop right there, Mister Castro. He hasn't testified about, about velocity. There's been nothing testified about velocity, so let's keep it on what he said.
He, he, he testified that the thirty-six inch was put in to reduce the velocity of water going down the mountain.
He testified that that's what he was told.
So are you? You're aware that during the meetings with members of West Orange. They were apprised that prior to your construction, water never flowed down the mountain. That never flowed down the mountain. Down since your construction.
Mi- Mister Castro, this is gonna be also a yes, no question. That's it.
Is you aware of it or not?
I am, I am not.
You're not aware, okay, now.
Sorry, Andy, I didn't want to interrupt you. I just want to be clear. Water has always flowed down the mountain. At least since when I moved in in May of twenty-one and walked around the backyard and in, in rain and sunshine. Water has always flowed down.
Yeah, but have, and and you have seen this, so you walked onto my twenty feet in order to see the water? Going through our, our, our shrubbery and growth?
Well, a- a- as you know, I didn't think I was walking on your twenty feet. But I do have the video of those old clay pipes and if Grabowski put the silt fence on the property line. The outflow of those gray pipes is about a foot onto your property. So standing on my side, I could see onto your side. And see the water going down twenty-nine to twenty-nine mountain. And I also saw the drone pictures you sent.
Right, so you saw, you saw pictures of the water going down twenty-nine. As your, as your construction was going on for your project, correct?
During that time period, yeah, water, water went, water went down before the project start.
Ask in the form of a que, Mister Castro, ask in the form of a question.
During your construction, when you were blasting away at the mountain, you observed water going down twenty, going down the mountain, correct?
I object, I object to the question. That they are getting into blasting. They're talking about something that's not before the sport.
I don't know. I think how, how, how more relevant could, can it be when we're gonna talk about how much water's coming down the mountain since this project?
No, this, this site plan application is to do stormwater management.
And the stormwater management is to stop water from going down the mountain.
If you'd let him put it in.
Put in what? I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, okay, Mi- Mister Castro, we're, we're not having a colloquy between you two. Okay, so ask a question. Mister Cohen will answer or say he knows or doesn't know.
When Mister Cohen, Mister Cohen, when they were doing the blasting of the bedrock? To begin your construction, is that when you started?
I am objecting to that. There's no testimony concerning blasting of bedrock.
I agree with that. There is no.
When you were doing your blasting of rock. In order to your project, is that when you saw the water going down the mountain?
Again, Mister Chairman, there was no testimony of that. This is something that was raised by. Some gentleman by the name of Sherman. Wasn't by Mister Cohen. Mister Cohen has been talking about. He talked about the seepage fit installations and he talked about the ditch.
No, he talked about Grabowski having, doing, doing, doing the blasting and then building the wall.
No, he did not. I'm sorry, Mister Chairman, I.
One, one second, Miss McGovern. Did Mister Conan, did Mister Conan talk about that dynamite was not used? It was another form of, uh, material used?
Yes, he did, he did mention they didn't use dynamite. They used another type of, uh.
In response to a question.
No, he testified.
Mister Castro, Mister Castro, Mister Castro, please, one moment. We, we want to work this out reasonably, okay?
Well, I'm looking at the notes and in his direct testimony, he said during excavation, they found a historical path. So he did mention excavation. He didn't talk about the method of excavation.
That is correct.
Described excavation. So there is that, there is that. I'm going through my notes continuing.
Mine too. So Mister Castro, you could talk about excavation. I'd leave blasting out of it.
Well, how, well, let, let me ask him. How, how was the excavation done by Grabowski, Mister Cohen?
Mister, he testified to the excavation of the seepage fits.
No, he take, he talked about the, like, Grabowski doing excavation in order to build the wall.
No, the wall was for the seepage fits.
Spoke about creating a temporary berm to do the construction of the pool and the poolhouse. And, um, and then he went on to say he found in, in, in excavation that they found the trail. From the Lenny Lenapi tribe, I mean.
That is correct. That is all about the seepage fits. And you can ask him about the seepage fits. He can ask him about that excavation.
Avoid the word blasting, oh, avoid the word blasting. When, during the excavation portion of this construction, Mister Cohen, is that when you noticed that the water was going down the mountain?
I object. You asked him. He told you that he saw the water going down the mountain from the time he moved there.
He's, I, he's asking him if he saw more water going down as a result of the excavation, I believe.
There was no more water going down as well to excavation. I thought it was quite marvelous the way Grabowski created this berm. To retain all the water from the construction. Whatever water that was coming down the ditch between forty and forty-two continued because it had nothing to do with the construction. But, but, but Grabowski created a berm and retained all the water for the excavation that he did for the pool and the poolhouse. That was separated apart from any water going down the ditch, coming from Llewellyn Park parcel, coming from the Crystal Point parcel. Coming down the storm basins, down Eagle Ridge Way. That water never stopped coming.
Richard, let me ask you something else. Wouldn't the water have started going down, down the mountain? Once you remove all of the shrubbery and growth that was protecting the, 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 the mountain? From having the water go down the mountain?
I object.
Mr. Creolo, that is part of stormwater management, so that I'm gonna allow.
But he's, uh.
That is stormwater management. That is in the ordinance, so that I'm going to allow. Go right ahead, Mister Kessler.
So once, once you, you remove the entire growth. From your peak of the mountain, which was past my twenty feet. Wouldn't that have caused all of the water to start, water start running down the mountain? There's nothing to protect it anymore.
You keep seem to be ignoring the eight to ten-foot berm that you and Jane. Climbed on top of, that was seeded with hay, hayseed and grass. And that's what stopped the water from the construction from going down the mountain. You're, you're, you seem to be totally ignoring that. And, and I just recently sent you more information about it because you have this misperception in your head when we took.
But I'm asking the question. That's an attack on me. That's not an answer what's in my head.
Question.
You, you seem to have this misperception about the extraordinary efforts that was done. Wh- you know, when the excavation was done to prevent it. I mean, I hired Paul Grabowski, Grabowski Construction Corp. because he is, he has fifty years of experience. He works for the town, does many of the town's storm drainage, worked in Llewellyn Park. He knows this like the back of his hand and I relied on his expertise and deferred to him. And, and he took all these extraordinary steps and it cost me a ton of money as well.
I, I'm sure it did. I feel badly about that, but don't, you keep on saying how great he did. Didn't this town stop him from continuing working because he did such a poor job?
Mister Kessler, Mister Castro, we don't know why the town, I don't, A, I don't know if the town did that. B, I don't know the reason that it was done, so don't testify, please. Can I ask a question?
Okay, let me ask this folks something else. The, 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 the wall that was built. How close is it to the peak of the mountain?
Well, I don't know. What you mean by the peak of the mountain, but it's fifteen feet away from your property line.
Okay, well, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't that be in violation of the sleep, steep slope ordinance? That you built a wall within fifteen feet of the mountain peak?
So, um, again, I'm not an expert, but my understanding is it's temporary shoring. And that you can have a, um, what Colliers has proposed and, and supplied. And I'm sure that they'll discuss and that it hopefully will be approved. Um, but, and, and it's in full compliance with the ordinance, but I would, I really would defer to the engineers to address that question.
Now, I just want to go to something else. So, uh. as you view the mountain from, uh, the Llewellyn Park, uh, side, whether it's, uh, twenty-nine Mountain Avenue, um, or the, uh, neighboring properties, uh, it's been submitted that the contours of the mountains have been changed as a result of your, uh, construction.
I object.
I'm going to finish the question first, then you can object. Is it your testimony that that is an optical illusion?
I'm, I'm, I don't understand the question. Can you rephrase?
Said what I saw was an optical illusion.
Mr. Chairman, who's exhausted his time.
Okay, I'm going to let him finish the question. Go right ahead. If you can answer, say yes. If you can't answer, say no.
So the question is, is it an optical, uh, uh, um, question, uh, optical illusion?
Yeah. You said that, you said the contours haven't been changed and we're seeing an optical illusion. That's what you said. Is that your testimony?
I, I said, when you're looking from, from your house at the bottom of the mountain, and it was previously an eight to ten-foot high berm that was there temporarily, and now is, has been removed because the stormwater system that was approved was installed. I could understand how you could have the perception that it was, that the mountain was changed.
From what side are you talking from? Looking from your side or looking from up from, from the Llewellyn Park side?
Looking up from the Llewellyn Park side.
Oh, so you're saying what we're seeing because of one view I saw from your top three or four years ago, I'm, I'm experiencing an optical illusion.
I'm just saying it's a different perspective. It's not optical illusion.
That's the, that's the word you used. I didn't use the words.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessler. You're done. Your time has been expired. Mr. Simon.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just a couple of, uh, follow-ups. Um, Mr. Cohen, the, did you or your contractors perform excavation within the steep slope areas you described it earlier in your testimony tonight?
Not to my knowledge.
Was there any blasting performed as you described it within the steep slope area as you believe it exists?
Mr. Chairman, there's no blasting.
Let Mr., so Mr. Cohen can answer that question. I have no problem.
No is the answer.
Mr. Cohen, you, you talked about putting down, you wanted to put down some sod. Um, first of all, do you know whether putting down the sod is identified anywhere on your site plan?
I believe it's listed, it's, it says lawn on some page of this, of the plan that Collier submitted. I, I, I don't know for sure unless I look at it again.
And, um, in those areas where you claim that the Colliers' plan shows lawn, uh, what was there prior to the construction activities on your site? Was it, was it underbrush that Mr. Kessler referred to?
No, it was lawn.
So it's your testimony that where you intend to put down sod or lawn was all formerly lawn prior to the construction activities? For your pool and pool house?
Yes, the underbrush was the fifteen feet offset from the property line where Grabowski put his equipment in order to put the stormwater drainage in.
Other than that fifteen-foot swath of underbrush, was, was there any other underbrush as you describe it on your property that was removed in connection with your construction activities?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Cohen about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Simon about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Jerry Sweeney. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Gerald Sweeney. I live in the park and I just have a couple of questions, uh, because it's sometimes difficult to, uh, understand items when you're not there or see it. But I want to add focus on the thirty-six-inch elliptical pipe. Um, is that on your property, uh, for forty Eagle Ridge?
Yes.
And, and was that installed by Grabowski at your request?
Yes and no. Um, what I mean by that is that we got the SC directive to clean the debris out of the ditch, replace the, uh, install rip rack and remove the debris. And as Grabowski got to the easterly end and saw the broken pipe, he, um, decided to replace the broken circular pipes with this elliptical pipe. So it was kind of after the fact when he told me about it and asked me about it and, and I explained why elliptical. And he explained how it's more environmentally sensitive and slows velocity. I said, okay, sounded like a good idea.
Was that, to the best of your knowledge, installed as part of a stormwater management plan?
To the best of my knowledge, it was installed in accordance with the directive of SCD to clean up the debris in the ditch and install the rip rack. So he took, he took that directive, you know, with the broken pipes to replace those broken pipes. And he chose to use that concrete elliptical pipe.
Did the, uh, did the SCD, uh, uh, order that the pipe be replaced?
No, it did not specifically order. It talked, the, the directive was about removing debris and, and that's the way Grabowski interpreted. And I believe, to the best of my knowledge, when SCD came and saw it, they said, um, add it to the SCD plan because it's not currently showing on the SCD plan.
What does that pipe, that thirty-six-inch elliptical pipe connect to?
So on the south end, so let's call that the inflow end, the drainage ditch that originates from that Crystal Point wooded parcel and goes under Eagle Ridge Way and then daylights at forty Eagle Ridge Way, the front of it. Water flows down there. Water also flows from all the storm basins on Eagle Ridge Way, which is fed again by, uh, water runoff on Eagle, from on Eagle Ridge Way as it also water running off from the high points of Crystal Point. So it goes into that drainage ditch at the front of forty Eagle Ridge Way. And then as it goes eastward towards Llewellyn Park, there is that, I call it a tributary, tributary uh, from the ten fifteen-foot wide swath of, uh, land owned by the trustees of Llewellyn Park that run behind forty-two is pitched into that same drainage ditch and both water sources funnel into that inflow of that elliptical pipe. And it outflows at the top of twenty-nine mountain where the two pre-existing twelve-inch clay pipes historically outflowed.
Okay, uh, thank you. Is your property, are you part of the condo association up there?
I am not.
Okay, you're separate from, did, uh, uh, did anyone consult with Crystal Point condo as to the, uh, re-installation of, uh, new, uh, stormwater drainage pipe?
I, I have to object. I don't know what, is he talking about the elliptical pipe?
Yes, I'm talking about the elliptical pipe.
No, the elliptical pipe was on my property and Grabowski was doing that in response to the SCD direction. I did try and raise with the town and Crystal Point, addressing the water that's coming from the association. I notated that when they got the approval from the township and the approved resolutions, there was a directive that they were supposed to prevent runoff from entering Llewellyn Park. And I would said I'd be happy to sit down with Crystal Point and the town and Llewellyn Park and see if we could collectively address what is coming from Crystal Point and running through my property. And I kept getting rebuffed by township officials.
So are you saying that, um, you couldn't get Crystal Point to, uh, to engage? And the township, uh, didn't support, uh, working with Crystal Point on that stormwater, uh, pipe?
Some of the city council persons were advocating for it, but the, but the township officials, the, I guess, the zoning official and others, um, did not want to en- engage. And since it really had nothing to do with the work that I was doing on, on my property, I, I, I tried. I want, you know, I believe in being good neighbors and, and living with people. And, uh, and so, you know, I moved on. Um, I'm still willing and happy to do it if, if we could engage. But again, it has nothing to do with what we're here for tonight and for the improvements that I made, uh, on forty Eagle Ridge Way.
And, uh, was Grabowski, uh, uh, the contractor to perform all the construction or all the major construction, including the stormwater uh, management, uh, construction on forty Eagle Ridge?
They were the site contractor. They did all the site work and the stormwater work. And I, um, upon the approval by the board, I intend to, uh, utilize them to install the improvements to the stormwater system that's being proposed, um, by, um, the applicant and Colliers.
Okay, who is, uh, uh, what properties, uh, immediately adjacent to, uh, forty Eagle Ridge?
If you know.
I object. This has nothing to do with the application, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. I agree. Move on, Mr. Sweeney.
I can't talk. Yes, okay. Uh, I think, uh, let me see if I have any other questions. No, those are all the questions I have. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Cohen about his testimony? Please raise your hand. Mr. Simon, go right ahead, sir.
Just, just, just two follow-ups. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Cohen, um, with regard to the elliptical pipe, uh, based on the Colliers' plan, it appears that, that pipe, um, bisects, uh, Lot eleven, which is owned by Llewellyn Park. Is that your understanding?
Mr. Chairman, if he could save that question for Colliers.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm asking him as the, as the property owner, he, he's talked a lot about this elliptical pipe. And I just want to know whether he's aware that part of that pipe is located on the Llewellyn Park property.
Okay, if you know.
If you know.
No, if you don't, don't say no.
I didn't think it's on the property, no.
Okay, um, is that pipe on, uh, forty-two? Property, forty-two Eagle Ridge Way at all, to your knowledge?
I don't think so.
Yeah, and the, um, drainage ditch rip rap that you testified to earlier, um, the installation of that was also, was that also partially on forty-two Eagle Ridge Way?
I don't, I, I don't believe so.
So, so your testimony is that all the construction activities regarding that drainage ditch took place exclusively on forty Eagle Ridge Way?
SCD directed the drainage ditch to be cleared. I testified it runs between forty and forty-two. I- i- if it, if it's a micron on one side, a micron on the other side, I can't tell you that. I'm not an engineer, surveyor. We tried and do the right thing. They said put rip rack in and clean the debris. The contractor put rip rack in and cleaned the debris.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take, it's nine thirty-five. We're going to take a five-minute bio break to nine forty. We're, five minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, 9:41, we're back on the record, guys. Welcome back. Okay, do any additional members of the public have any questions for Mr. Cohen on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Great, seeing none, that portion. I'm gonna ask one question. Mr. Cohen, did you have any direct communication with Crystal Point about where the water originates, the pipe, or any discussions thereto?
Yes. When the tree almost fell on my son, I spoke to Marty Berkowitz, the president of the condo association, and I was like, Marty, these trees are all rotted out because that wooded parcel keeps flooding and it almost killed Gavin. And he was very apologetic. And then within days, they came and cut down the rotted trees and as well as cleaned out the ditch and the wooded parcel and cleaned the debris from the pipe that went into the drainage ditch. And that stopped the flooding on the street.
Okay, so do you, and you may not, you may not know, so it's a yes/no answer. Do you know where the water starts that eventually flows under your property going eventually towards Llewellyn Park?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, would it be your intention somewhere along, I'm sorry? Would it be your intention somewhere along the line, if possible, to mitigate this in some way so it doesn't flow through your property going down there?
Well, I spoke to councilman, former council president Bill Rutherford, as well as other councilperson, and said, this is a, you know, I'm aware there's been ongoing issues in the Llewellyn Park stormwater for many years and that they were ready to sue the town if they haven't already regarding maintenance of stormwater down there. And he came out and saw what was happening, and he said he would advocate for a global resolution that would involve Crystal Point, me as the manager, the property owner that had passed through, Llewellyn Park, and the town. And I was willing to do that then, and I'm willing to do that now.
Okay, awesome, thank you very much. We're gonna close this portion of the discussion, and Ms. Triolo, you're up.
Thank you. Our next witness is Jesse Coakley from Colliers Engineering and Design. If you could swear him in, please.
Mr. Coakley, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Coakley, by whom are you employed?
Colliers Engineering and Design.
Are you a professional engineer?
Yes.
Can you please put your credentials on the record for this board?
Sure. I graduated with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Manhattan College in 2005. I've been practicing engineering since that time, so it'll be 20 years this July. I've been a licensed PE since 2012 in both New York State and New Jersey. I have testified before dozens of land use boards in the state of New Jersey, but this is my first time in front of West Orange.
Okay, well, welcome, Mr. Coakley. Do any members of the board have any questions about the voir dire of Mr. Coakley's education and bona fides? Seeing none, Mr. Coakley, we recognize you as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, who is personally licensed in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Coakley, did you prepare the stormwater management plans that preliminary and final major site plan for 40 Eagle Ridge Way, proposed residential improvements for the stormwater management system that is proposed for the property in Block 106, Lot 20.03?
Yes.
And is that your signature and seal on the plans?
Yes, it is.
Did you also prepare a stormwater management report for proposed residential improvements, Block 106, Lot 20.03, in the township of West Orange, Essex County, New Jersey, dated September 16, 2024?
Yes.
Is that your signature and your seal on the stormwater management report?
It is.
In a, in your capacity as the consulting engineer to the owner of this property, were you given a copy of a report prepared by Matrix New World Engineering that was originally dated November 26, 2024, revised January 8, 2025?
Yes.
And you've reviewed that letter?
I have.
Okay. Mr. Coakley, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you. Could you please walk this board through the proposed plans as well as the backup information from your stormwater management report so that they can understand clearly what Colliers is proposing to construct at 40 Eagle Ridge Way as a stormwater management project?
Sure, thanks.
Okay, microphone is yours, sir.
Right, so obviously, the site is located at 40 Eagle Ridge Way. It's Block 106, Lot 20.03 in the R1 residential zone. It's 2.07 acres in size and was previously reviewed and approved as a minor development to construct the pool and poolhouse. During construction, more than one acre of land was disturbed, thus qualifying the development as a major site plan under the Township Stormwater Management Regulations. The plans and report that you referenced before have been submitted to the board and outline the existing and proposed conditions for the site as well as the construction of the stormwater management system to bring the site into compliance as a major development. The existing site contains the single-family dwelling with an asphalt driveway, currently also the in-ground pool and the poolhouse. Generally, the site drains from west to east away from Eagle Ridge Road.
Can you identify, when you're testifying, if you are referring to any of your plan pages, could you either identify them or bring them up on the screen and walk the board through?
Sure. I think I will go right to, I'm about to discuss proposed conditions, and I think the grading plan is most appropriate. Let me know if everyone can see that, okay?
Yes, sir, perfect.
Great. So on this plan, the darker lines represent the proposed improvements. The gray lighter lines represent the existing conditions from when the project was triggered as a major development.
Can I just ask you to identify when you're talking about each page that you're identifying so we can follow through?
Sure, my apologies. This is Sheet 4 of 8, the grading and drainage plan.
Thank you, sir.
So the existing, you know, single-family dwelling is here. The pool is located here, and the poolhouse is located, you know, to the north of that. Under proposed conditions, the site will generally mimic the existing drainage pattern, you know, from west to east. However, the majority of the development and improvements will be captured and routed through subsurface basins to attenuate peak flows. As was discussed earlier, there is a previously installed drywell system, part of the reviewed and approved minor development. Under the Township Stormwater Regulations, a minor development is only required to capture and treat three inches of rainfall runoff. So that 10-tank system designed by Materazzo, located here, says limits of existing seepage tank field, was designed for the three inches of rainfall for the pool, house, and the pool. The design and detail for the system, as I mentioned, was previously approved and included an outfall pipe downstream of the boulder wall. As part of the major site plan application, which is shown on our plans here in the darker lines, includes a series of pipes and drain inlets and manholes to be installed to convey stormwater runoff from the house, the poolhouse, and surrounding lawn area to the proposed subsurface infiltration basin. A major development under the town's stormwater requirements require the applicant to design the system to attenuate peak flow per DEP stormwater regulations for the two-year, 10-year, and 100-year storm event, provide water quality mitigation, and recharge, groundwater recharge requirements. So hence the need for the additional stormwater system here. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to demolish and replace the existing asphalt driveway with pervious pavers. The void space of the subsurface stone provides additional stormwater storage capacity. The applicant is also proposing to construct a scour hole at the terminus of the 36-inch culvert in the southeast corner of the site, along with the outlet control structure on the pipe. Finally, there is also a two-foot-wide curtain drain proposed at the perimeter of the flatter lawn area to promote infiltration. The calculations for the sizing of the scour hole, including the outflow from the drywell system, shall be added to the report as requested by Matrix in their January 8 review letter. Together, the measures bring the site into compliance with the required stormwater regulations. As the driveway is reducing the motor vehicle's surface and providing porous pavement and a slight reduction from the existing configuration, the water quality requirement is met. Through proposed infiltration practices, the site is designed to maintain 100% of the average annual groundwater recharge volume. And as can be seen in Page 3 of the stormwater report, the proposed practices are designed to meet and/or exceed the required peak runoff reductions for the two, 10, and 100-year storm events. The stormwater report includes the modeling and mapping used to calculate and demonstrate the compliance, as I've just outlined. Matrix's January 8 letter includes some minor technical comments about the drainage report, which we can state we have no issue in addressing as a condition of approval should the board see fit. Soil movement calculations shall be added to the plans, and a permit shall be sought from HEP SCD, a copy of which shall be provided to the township as requested by Matrix. And we do not intend to remove any additional trees as well. Lastly, the plans also propose the construction of a tiered boulder wall in the rear of the property. I'm gonna go to that part of the plan here. And I'm actually gonna flip back one page as it's a little bit clearer to start. This is Page 3, which is the layout plan. You can see the grayer wall here is wall under construction. That's the wall as it is today. We're proposing to add a second wall stepped back, hence the term tiered, to reduce the overall height of the wall. I'm gonna switch back to Page 4, the grading plan, so you can see the grades, which identify that at the north end, the wall is non-existent, not even a foot high. And then as we progress south, the wall gets to a height of about two and a half feet. And that will be the height of the existing wall. Then there shall be a little bit of grading in between to the next wall, which will also have a maximum height of two and a half feet at its highest point.
What, what is the distance between the two proposed tiers?
It's about four to five feet. It varies a little bit. So greater than the height of the wall. Our office can supply or will supply the requested details and supporting calculations from a licensed structural PE requested by Matrix as a condition of final approval, again, should the board see fit. That pretty much wraps up my overview of the project from what is contained on our plans and the report from a stormwater compliance standpoint. I believe I've addressed the comments in the January 8 review memo from Matrix, but if the board or Mr. Scott has additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd like to, I'd like to direct my witness to Page 3 of 8. If you could go there and show the driveway?
Oh, sure.
These are the porous pavers?
Yep.
And that's the proposed contours of the new driveway, is that correct?
The contours of the grading are on the grading plan, Sheet 4.
Okay.
But Sheet 3 contains the, you know, limits of the Belgium block curve, and you can see the hatch here depicts the pervious pavers.
Okay, can you go to Page 4 of 8 and point out for the board where the driveway is being reduced in size?
Sure, so I think it's easier to see the difference between Page 2, which is the existing conditions at slash demolition plan, where you can see the driveway, you know, it has a little bit of an inconsistent edge in some spots and kind of flares out, whereas on Page 3, you can see it's definitely more radial in nature, smoother curves, and that allows for the kind of reduction in the impervious surface overall.
And just to reiterate, your testimony is that the proposed subsurface drainage system will meet or exceed the requirements of the state of New Jersey?
That is correct. It meet or exceeds the required peak flow reductions for the two, 10, and 100-year storm. It also meets the groundwater recharge requirement. And because we are reducing impervious and not increasing, the water quality requirements is essentially waived.
Okay. With regard to your stormwater report, are these all of the details and the calculations that support the design that we see in your plans?
It is. Matrix's letter has asked for additional calculations on some of the things like the scour hole, which I mentioned, which we can certainly add to them.
Okay. Once the system is approved by this board, would you then generate the stormwater management manual to match the system that's approved by this board?
Correct. It would include inspection and maintenance recommendations from the manufacturer, but also the PE requirements, and then it would also designate responsible parties, how frequent the inspections would be, and then what steps for any maintenance would be required.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions. Mr. Coakley, do you have any other comments and testimony that you would like to, that I may have missed?
I don't at this time.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, Mister Chairman, um, I have no other questions for this witness. The proposed stormwater. Uh, management system is as depicted on the plans and the compliance has been testified to.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go a little bit about it out of order. Mister Scott, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley about his testimony?
Uh, yes, I do.
And, and your letter from Matrix to uh, Mister Coakley?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, I do have some questions for uh, Mister Coakley. Uh, Mister Coakley, uh, I had the uh, pleasure of meeting with your um, associate uh, Justin Farisano. Uh, regarding this application a few weeks ago, and we uh, kind of discussed a lot of the things that are in the letter. Uh, I don't wanna bore the board members with, you know, going through the letter. I just wanna ask. Uh, is there anything within my letter that you have any issue with or that you would have a problem addressing? Uh, as part of this, um, as part of our review?
We do not, we do not object to providing the additional clarifications and calculations that you've requested. Um, I did mention the um, detail, construction detail for the retaining wall will be supplied by a structural. Uh, licensed engineer um, with the necessary calculations, um, the. Only thing I think that I didn't maybe touch on was common one point one, the architectural drawings, um. You know, those were part of the prior building permits for the pool in the poolhouse, so they weren't included with this application, um. You know, that they're on, they're on record with the township I believe already.
Okay, great. So um, you know, in addition, you know, to the comment letter, I do have um, some, some few things. I'm, I'm glad that there's no issue with our comments and that you were willing to comply, um, you know.
I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mister Scott, but I would like to add to um, what Mister Coakley said. Um, is that on the four point one? You're looking for the installed dry well system seepage tanks. Those were Materazzo's plans. If you don't have them, I know that I submitted them. But if you don't have them, we can get them to you, but they were not prepared by colleagues.
Hey, that's great. Yes, I would like to see them, um. Uh, that would be something that um, could have an impact. Well, should I say that the, the current or proposed work? Um, is going to be connecting into that system, so um, it would be prudent for us to, to review that.
We will give that to you. If you, if you haven't received it, we will send a direct copy.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, uh, Mister Coakley, um, few questions, um. In terms of the uh, outlet control structure that you guys are posing as part of this, so you have an outlet control structure that you're proposing. That's uh, yes, that's up in the area where that uh, concrete elliptical pipe is up, you know, was talked about by uh, Mister Cone. So you have the outlet control structure that you're proposing as well as a scour hole. How is the outlet control structure going to be working without it, uh, without having a storage mechanism? To uh, to, to, to hold back that water or work to where to hold it back to? Can you please explain that for myself and for the board?
Sure. So this was something that I think Mister Cone uh, mentioned in his testimony was something he. You know, asked us to look at and based on. The information provided to us that with the photos that he, you know, I think has sent to the township and. Discussed about the two twelve-inch pipes. We were looking at it from a perspective of, okay, if there were two twelve-inch pipes here before. What could we put in place to as closely mimic that situation as possible? So the outlet control structure is basically consists of, I think, two ten-inch um. Outfalls um, to kind of mimic that prior drainage um, pattern. It was our understanding that, you know, this drainage ditch was functioning. Um, with those twelve-inch pipes previously, so. The uh, thinking based on the information provided was that that outlet structure would. Would essentially return the functionality to that prior state. And then the scour hole, uh, did you ask about the scour?
No, uh, ye- yes, I did. Go ahead, please.
Okay, and so the scour hole um, is sized for, um. You know, we will provide that, but it was per, I think, S C D's request. Um, so that was sized in accordance with their regulations. But to, I think, one of the comments in your letters, it does have to be um, updated. To include the um, outflow from the um, existing dry wells that are gonna discharge in that. In that area as well.
Great. So, you know, I reviewed the plan, um, and then I uh, got some additional information in uh, in uh, meeting with the municipal engineer. And that's what forced me to revise my letter. Uh, I have since gone out to the site. To uh, to explore what's going on and I've seen, um, you know, the, the runoff that has been uh. Mentioned by some of the residents of, of the Wellon Park uh, community. You know, I know that there's this drainage ditch that, you know, that, that was there and, you know, it's still a little unclear, at least in terms of the documents. What was there in terms of uh, you know, there was the ditch and then there was uh, some two. Pipe types that I guess were at some point uh, damaged and then water was not flowing there at the rate that it seems to be flowing now. Do you have any information on what was previously there in terms of, uh, you know, prior to. Uh, the S C D coming in and making the request to put in this elliptical pipe?
I don't, I just have the uh, same kind of photos that Mister Cone has shared and the prior surveys, I think that were referenced. Don't show those pipes either. So I think they were pretty well hidden, um, and I think Mister Cone's testimony also alluded to when him and. Uh, Grabowski walked it. They, they found them as they worked their way down the ditch after S C D asked them to clear it. So I, I wasn't aware.
Has there been any calculations or any type of uh, analysis of this ditch? Their contributing um, drainage areas are that are going to it, you know, what, what type of flows that we can anticipate during a uh. You know, any type of, you know, two, ten, a hundred year storm events, had, had that been done at all?
So we looked at it strictly from our site and I think you can see in our um, design. And the drainage area maps, you know, uh, based on the existing and proposed contours, there is part of the. You know, forty Eagle Ridge Way that goes into that ditch, but the design that we've come up with. Includes the infiltration basin here to capture a lot of the, you know, proposed and existing areas. Uh, but then also, as I mentioned, kind of this two-foot wide uh, curtain drain that we're putting in here as well to really. Cut off any additional, you know, surface runoff. So from the analysis of, you know, the forty Eagle Ridge Way property. Uh, it's gonna be a reduction getting to that ditch.
Okay, so um, I, I would like to ask, uh, as you're revising your plans or revising the report. If you can do um, some type of calculation to show what that reduction is in terms of, you know, it's from the pre and post condition. What your property or what your client's property or his improvements, how it's reducing, how much is uh, going into that ditch? Is that something that you would be okay with doing?
I, 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 I would like to understand what you're asking him. You're asking him to. I, I think his report already shows that there's um, a reduction. Um, by virtue of this design. Uh, but it sounds like you're asking him to do a calculus that's way beyond what. This stormwater management plan proposes.
Well, why don't you, why don't you let Mister Coakley respond to that? Cause he's the expert.
I believe our stormwater report includes analysis at. Three different design points, one of which is the ditch. Um, so we can extract that out and give you that in a table comparison, you know, that shouldn't be too difficult to do.
Okay, thank you. And in um, you know. In reviewing, you know, the, the documents and also seeing the site, um, it's, I'm pretty comfortable in saying that, uh. You know, what you're proposing with this additional uh, infiltration basin, uh, and it is infiltration, correct?
That is correct.
Um, has any geotechnical investigation been done so that we can uh, be sure that we are gonna get the right? Infiltration rates in, in this uh, with this new system?
We have not performed those tests in situ yet. We did. Uh, confirm using obviously a web soil survey that is hydrologic soil group C, um, which obviously. For those that aren't aware, the groups are broken down A, B, C and D. A is typically the uh. Like best draining soil, uh, I think sandy soils. D is the worst draining soils, think more clay. C is obviously above D, um, so we assumed, you know, the most conservative infiltration rate possible in the design. It's possible um, that when we go out there. The rate is not as great. We may have to add a few chambers to the, to the system here. It's entirely possible. It could be better than we assumed, um, and the system could be smaller than what we've shown here to meet the reductions, but um. That's what the, the design was based on.
Very great, um. So, you know, again, based upon my review, um, I don't specifically see. Um, that this, you know, this issue that the, the residents of Wellon Park are having. Is, is specific to this development. Cause the site as it is, like as I mentioned, I was at the site yesterday and um. The existing ten tanks or the dry well system that was, that's are currently in place seems to be doing his job. Um, this new system that you're gonna have, that's gonna be, you know, collecting the runoff. Looks like from the new uh, poolhouse building and uh. I guess some roof drainage from the existing house and some, maybe some additional uh, inlets. Uh, it's gonna be collected and then, you know, eventually uh, stored and then discharged, um. Into the, 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 just. The, the ten tank system as Mister uh, Cone described it. Has there been any thought about collecting or should I say redirecting? Water from the drainage ditch into that system, into the new proposed system? Has that been considered at all?
Uh, it wasn't. We, cause we were focused primarily on the, you know, major development of this property. It's my understanding that most of the. Flow from the, that enters the ditch is coming from Crystal Point, you know, which we don't really have any control over.
And to your knowledge, is there any type of easement that exists? Uh, that allows for that, you know, that ditch, like is there, you know, you're, I, I don't know if your surveyors have done any uh. You know, research on this, on this property and, you know, but is there any type of easement? That allows for that water coming from the uh, the Crystal Lake runoff and that to, to come in into uh, Mister. Or into your, uh, your, your client's property? Are you aware of any type of, you know, drainage um, easements or anything that, that might be taking place throughout this, this area?
No, not on the surveys that I've seen. Um, which I think, I think was pointed out earlier, is available at the links, you know, for the, for the hearing, everything that I've seen is, is available there, so.
Yeah, I just, I, I just, for Mister Scott's purpose, I mean, historically. Um, there was a lot of work done up in, in this area where Eagle Ridge Way is and roads were relocated. And as part of the development, the uh, stormwater system. Under Eagle Ridge Way was a part of that development and approved by West Orange. So this is not a new condition uh, that the Crystal Lake water is. Running through a conduit under Eagle Ridge Way and into the ditch that was approved by West Orange. Much like the other uh, conduit from the other part of the Crystal Lake property. That goes under Eagle Ridge Way and um, joins. Uh, that conduit and adds to the water that goes over the hill. So this is all uh, West Orange. Uh, approvals at some point in time when Crystal Point was developed, which I believe. If I'm not mistaken, is probably twenty-five to thirty years ago.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Um, and then um, I guess the last question in terms of stormwater for Mister Coakley is. Has there been any, I guess, consideration or, you know, has there been any request by your client? To look at what it would take to uh. To try like some type of stormwater management system, you know, to uh, account for that runoff that's coming from off-site. Cause as Mister Cone did um, testify to, he did mention that uh, he did inquire about potentially uh. Building some type of a, 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 an off-site system that can help, you know. Address the, you know, the, this, these issues with the runoff. Ha- ha- has your client asked you to look at that at all to, to see what could be done to potentially, uh, you know?
Mister Chairman, this is, this is well beyond, this is well beyond the application.
And a question was asked, either Mister Coakley can answer it or he can't answer it. So let the expert, let the experts ask a question and let the experts answer. If he can, if he can't answer, if it's beyond the scope that it was asked to do, then he can't answer it.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't asked to do anything more than, you know, address the major site plan compliance. But the only thing above that, as I mentioned, was Mister Cone did ask us to, you know, propose that outlet control structure on the thirty-six inch pipe. That was it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That, that's all, all the questions that I have for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Hazel, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. We'll go back to the board. We're gonna start in reverse order. Miss Cafford, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley on his testimony?
Uh, I do. Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, and thanks you, thanks uh, Mister Coakley for your um, testimony. Uh, question regarding the chamber system, um, just to clarify, is that designed to infiltrate stormwater?
Yes.
Okay, and um, it sounded like, uh, can you confirm, you said, uh. That at this point, no geotechnical analysis has been performed, is that right?
That is correct. Mister Scott did include that in his letter and we would agree to perform that testing, you know. As a condition of approval, obviously, and, and for submit back to him for review.
Okay, um, do you, uh, well, I guess one other question, I. You said, I think that you um, did look at the soils report, um, or soil survey for the area. Did it list a depth to bedrock? That you recall?
I don't recall that aspect of it. I do know that. Our system will be at a slightly higher elevation than the um. The existing or the installed dry well system. So that was also some, um, I guess. Um, information we took into account that that system has been functioning, was reviewed and approved, um, you know. At that time, so we're confident in this design, but I, I didn't review this website survey for the depth to bedrock specifically.
Okay, um. And um, is, has there been any thought to, you know, if, if this oils testing comes back and, you know, indicates that. You know, there, there are issues with bedrock or, um, you know, uh, the soils. Can't infiltrate the water. Is there any thought, you know, i- is there a feasibility for other types of systems that could be installed? Instead?
If we were to get zero infiltration rate, um, you know, that would put us into a, a different. Um, class because then. We would not have to meet infiltration, like green infrastructure requirements, so we would look to do a different practice. Um, we're optimistic slash confident that we will obtain, you know, um. Reasonable infiltration rates given. You know, the prior system, as I mentioned, but there are other um. Practices and, and, you know, uh, technologies out there that we could, we could.
Great, and um, one last question regarding the um. The seepage pit system that's already in and um the the new wall that you're proposing. Is there any concern about um? The the positioning of the wall, you know, having it right next to a seepage pit? Or see, yeah, the the seepage system?
One of Mister Scott's comments was a. Stability analysis, which takes into account, you know, the upstream. Um or the uphill, I should say, you know, um influences on the wall, so that would have to be part of that.
Okay, great. Um thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley on his on his testimony? Mister Cardoza, do you have any questions to Mister Coakley on his testimony? Okay, we'll come back to Mister Cardoza. Um. Mister Klein, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley on his testimony?
Yeah, um so that. You're, the driveway right now is impervious, hundred percent, because it's asphalt, and you're gonna be converting it into pervious pavers.
Correct.
When you designed your drainage system, did you, you designed it based on the pervious pavers?
Correct. So in our stormwater report, we have, you know, a tributary area. You know, that goes to those pervious pavers. Obviously, the top layers, like the paver itself, then underneath is like two different sets of graded stone that's wrapped in filter fabric. We're taking credit for the void space in the stones um as part of the, as part of the storage, so.
So then your your drainage. Calculations, design, the the ten double tanks, whatever, it's it's not typically, it's not. You wouldn't consider that conservative then. It wasn't like you designed it as if the pavers were. Hundred percent impervious and that the runoff would go to your system. So I guess I'm trying to get at, so do you have any excess capacity to pick up any of the water? That's coming off of Eagle Ridge Way into the site today?
I don't believe so. I mean, the system that we're, we've designed um, you know, for the site. Includes, you know, this system we're proposing here, the porous pavers, and that allows us to like hit those reductions. Um required by the state. Eh anything be, if we were to take more on, i- it would have to be, you know, the system would have to be revised.
Larger, okay. The location of, at the top of the screen, the location of where those seepage pits are. Can you comment on? The fact that it's so close? I guess, I guess my point is when it does seep in, if it does overflow at all, is it going to act as if it's running down the hill? Uh if it fails, if it overflows, anything like that?
There is an overflow pipe. That was part of, and thi- this was all designed part of the prior minor development, so we didn't design that. What we are going to do is, you know, add that outfall pipe to the the plan here. And bring it, you know, show what is there, but extend it and bring it to the the scour hole in this corner. It's it's this way, so.
And then, and then what happens when it gets to the scour hole? Is it gonna continue to the neighbor's property?
Yes.
So, but it'll be better or the same as it is?
No, no. So that flow. The entire flow, like at the design point, um after everything is installed, will be um. Reduced. I can tell you what those numbers will be. Give me a second here.
But yet it doesn't take into account. The existing water that's coming off of the street onto the site. Is that correct?
So, as part of the major development. We're looking at our site. It's the disturbance and improvements that we're creating. So, forty Eagle Ridge Way. And these stormwater improvements that you see on the plan before you is going to the state. DEP requires you to look at the existing two-year storm event and say, how much water is coming off of your site? How much water is coming off in the ten-year storm and how much water is coming off in the hundred-year storm? The, I'll open up my report here and put it on the screen, just so people can see the.
But when you say coming off the site.
So.
It doesn't account for the water that comes off the street onto the site and then from the site off the site?
Cur- correct. So it does not account for what is coming through, you know, Crystal Point into here, right?
All right.
Our study area is forty Eagle Ridge Way because that's what is under our control.
Okay.
Um and so. I just wanna open up the report here to show you the exact. Numbers.
So that water's gonna continue down the ditch that goes between forty and forty-two?
Correct.
And you're just taking into account. The new impervious, right?
Right. So in the two-year storm. The, you know, I said we analyzed this thing at three s- three design points, but. In the existing condition. It would be, I'm gonna use design point three, which I think is the furthest point. So that's like what goes on to, you know, down stream. Yeah. So existing condition in the two-year storm event, so that's a storm that would happen every two years, is roughly two and a half cubic feet per second. The state says, when you do a major development and the township or uh ordinance comply, you know, is the same thing, says. You can't discharge more than fifty percent of that number.
Okay.
So the stormwater we're putting in is reducing over existing fifty percent. At the two-year storm.
Okay.
In the ten-year storm. The existing flow is a little over five CFS from our site. We're required to, we can only discharge up to seventy-five percent of that, which would be three point eight seven five. We are two and a half CFS, so we're almost, we're we're fifty percent at that rate as well. Similarly. For the one hundred-year storm event, it's basically eleven cubic feet per section sec- second. We're required to, we're permitted to discharge no more than eighty percent, which would be eight point six five, we're five point four four.
Okay.
So the system is providing that, that reduction and then some.
Okay.
From our.
So, so in your opinion. The additional impervious and the reduction in the runoff. At the end of the day, if I'm downhill at either Twenty-Five Mountain or whatever the other addresses. Is there gonna be equal or a little bit less water coming off of forty? Less. Eagle Ridge, less, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, uh Mister Wilkes, do you have any questions?
No, no questions, Colonel.
Thank you. Mister Alper, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley on his testimony?
Uh no, I do not.
Thank you. Counselperson Scarpet, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley on his testimony?
Um, just a quick one. Um I appreciate his, all his work and his willingness to adhere to all of Mister. Scott's um concerns in his letters of recommendation, and we kinda know from hearing from residents. Uh who have had problems, particularly from Llewellyn Park, where they've had considerable damage and runoff to their homes, that. Any of our stormwater management systems are only as good as the maintenance we adhere to. And I know he said that, you know, the inspection and maintenance would be um put forth later. According to the manufacturer's specifications and. It would make uh recommendations for the responsible parties. On what has to be done. I just wanna get a sense of how that we will adhere to that and what exactly will be the responsibility for the maintenance.
So typically, the operation and maintenance plan would identify the owner. Of the facility, and then they would be required to, in the maintenance plan, designate. You know, a contractor or somebody who they would be in contract with to perform the regular inspection and maintenance. Um I'd have to defer to counsel on to how that gets, you know, incorporated um in this manner. Um I've seen it done a number of different ways, but I don't know if if Priscilla has any um. Thoughts on that, or or if the board attorney has any.
Yeah, I just hope that is clearly spelled out and well done.
Um, I can, I can, well, having, having, having reviewed um. Operation manuals and maintenance. Um they're pretty straightforward. They have forms that have to be filled out. Mister Coakley, you can. Uh chime in anytime you want, but there's forms that have to be filled out. There's dates that have to be entered. They have to be signed off as to what is done, who did it, and and they're not particularly difficult to follow. Um but the owner is responsible, ultimately responsible for making sure that in fact um. The inspections are done and the maintenance is carried out. Probably no different than like if you had a seepage pit in your yard and you had uh not stormwater, but something else in your. Uh septic system, you have to inspect those, you have to have somebody come and pump them out. You have to take care of it and maintain it. This would be no different. The owner would be responsible for getting. Them cleaned out as the manual dictates.
Great, thank you.
That, is that it, counsel person, Scarpet?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley on his testimony?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh Mister Coakley, I wanted to start with a thank you for clarifying between the minor. Site plan application and the major site plan application with the three-inch rain and the peak flow. I appreciate that. Prior to your testimony, I had asked about the infinity pool. Uh and the distance between the steep slope. Uh and now I'm hearing about the wall. Can you tell me what that distance is from the steep slope?
Sure thing. So the, you can kind of, I'll go back to that plan here. The um. So the pool is. About sixty-five feet to the wall. And then downhill of the wall uh is. About another fifteen feet to the property line, as as Mister Cohen testified earlier. So it's about eighty feet from the property line is the pool.
Mm-hmm, okay. And the wall?
And the wall is is fifteen feet from the property line.
How many? Fifteen?
Yeah, one five.
Mm-hmm. Which does not comply with our steep slope ordinance. Um I think my line of questioning was the kind of the opposite of what Mister Klein was asking. I was, I appreciate the porous pavers element, the green element there. Um but as far as a grading plan. Um eh are you, are you grading from east to west? Cause the questioning before was talking about water coming off of Eagle Ridge Way, but. How about this grading coming down to the west, to the pavers?
Uh so, so Eagle Ridge Way is on the bottom, the each here. And this, this is really like the high side of the site. You know, these are six twenty-seven elevation, six twenty-six. Um in the backyard, we have six twenty-five, and then it pitches all the way down, you know, I think at the property line here, it's six oh five. So everything, everything is still.
Okay.
High at Eagle Ridge Road, low, you know, on on.
Toward the back, okay, toward the east. All right, thank you.
And Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions for Mister Coakley on his testimony?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. One, but I do have a question for the um, the applicant's attorney. Will there be a landscaping uh presentation on this property?
Um, the landscaping, which is shown on page five of eight. Was approved as part of the um permits for the pool and the pool house. There is a landscaping plan there, but it was previously approved.
Okay, with details of additional trees or shrubbery and, you know, uh native prod?
Um, we can, you know, um. I, I thought that it's pretty um, pretty clear.
It's in the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's in the initial wing group's report.
Okay, I see.
Of November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, a detailed. Plan of the uh shrubbery and trees to be planted. You could refer to that. On page three of eleven. And four of eleven.
Okay.
And the landscape plan is on five of eight with a planting schedule.
Okay, thank you very much, man. Appreciate that. Um to Mister Coakley. I I don't see anywhere, you know, was there a measurement made of any additional stormwater runoff into the municipal storm source?
Uh, n- n- no, uh everything drains away from the municipal storm source. We're not proposing any connections to that.
Okay, so all the additional water is going into retention and the seeps that were and and that, which will eventually run off to. To other properties. Was there any consideration and thinking of putting any stormwater? From the back to the municipal stormwater to affect, maybe lessen the flow to anybody else's property?
So drainage. Um calculations. Are typically done to try to mimic the existing conditions. The site flows towards the other property. By bringing stormwater to the municipal system in Eagle Ridge Way, that would contribute more runoff to that. But also more challengingly, just logistics, we would have to be asking stormwater to flow uphill. Um what we.
Oh, I got, I I thought I understood, no, and I appreciate that.
What the stormwater ordinance that the township has adopted in is, you know, uh originated with the state, as I kind of outlined before, is. We're responsible to reduce the runoff over our existing. So while. We are still mimicking the existing drainage pattern, you know, going from west to east. We are reducing the flows coming off the property by by fifty percent, pretty much in every storm.
Okay, thank you very much, Coakley. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Mister Coakley, do you have any comments about the thirty-six inch pipe? That now faces Llewellyn Park from this property? And the water runoff, is it more, less, or about the same as previously uh said to occur?
I, I don't know. Um I don't know because the. I don't have a survey that includes the twelve-inch pipes that were there, so I can't, I don't know what slope they were at. I don't know what. You know, exact material they were and what condition they were in specifically. Those are all things that contribute to their capacity. Um so I can't, I can't comment whether this is different, worse, better, more, I can't say.
Okay, uh as a professional engineer, looking at this property, do you think it makes sense? In the overall project, since we have us, we're talking about stormwater management, to in some way address. That pipe that flows from Crystal Point to Llewellyn Park, traversing. Uh forty Eagle Ridge Way. Does it make sense to address that in some way?
Well, I think what eh what is happening here is the the outlet control structure on here that Mister Cohen has asked us to do. I think that. Does address it in some way.
It's. And what way is that?
Uh, well, it was designed to, like I mentioned before. The two twelve-inch pipes, that's kind of all we have to go off of, so the. The outlet control structure is essentially mimicking two twelve-inch pipes to the best that we can.
Uh I I'm sorry, I'm lost. You have a place where the water starts. It traverses through forty Eagle Ridge Way and goes to Llewellyn Park. This apparently, what we've been talking about, is a separate drainage system. Uh are you telling me that the two drainage systems interconnect, or are they still two separate drainage systems?
What what we're doing on our site is completely separate from. This drainage ditch that is being contributed to from here. What I, what I had mentioned before to Mister Scott at his request was. What from our, what from the forty Eagle Ridge Way property is going into that ditch? And our stormwater report, you know, shows that tributary area and the design that we have. You know, proposed here is reducing what we are putting into that ditch. And we can break that out and give that comparison versus the existing. So I think in a, in that way. We are, you know, improving that condition.
So is it your testimony that based on the. So is it your testimony that based on the way the stormwater management will be uh, accommodated? In your project, the flow from Crystal Point through. Forty Eagle Ridge Way will be decree of what of what it will be decreased to uh, Llewellyn Park?
No, I I we didn't look at Crystal Point. What what my testimony is and what the report shows. Is the stormwater runoff from forty Eagle Ridge Way. To the to the neighboring properties is going to be reduced. In compliance with the regulations. But even more than that, I mentioned before, it's supposed to be fifty percent for the two year storm, seventy five percent for the ten year storm and eighty percent for the hundred year. We're essentially providing fifty percent reductions from this property for all of those storm events. So it's half as much water is getting there or was getting there before.
So is it your testimony that fifty percent less water will be going from this property to? Llewellyn Park? Okay, but the water that is coming from Crystal Point will not be mitigated in any way. Except that i- in and of itself. If that was a separate. A separate number, that would be whatever the number was, and any water that was going from this property to Llewellyn Park will be reduced by fifty percent. Is that? What your testimony is?
My testimony is. What's coming from Crystal Point is unchanged. We're not proposing to change that. We don't have any control over that.
Okay, that that's what I'm asking. But there there is now. A runoff from this property into that ditch that goes to Llewellyn Park, but now with this system, it will be reduced by fifty. The this, the portion of that flow will be reduced by fifty percent from this property.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
I'm gonna, I'll just use like a round number here. The hundred year storm, which is in our report. What's going to Llewellyn Park from this property was about eleven CFS. We're gonna be about five and a half percent or five and a half CFS. What was coming from Crystal Point was X. I don't know what that number is after our project. That number is still gonna be X. But it won't be X plus eleven from our property. It'll be X plus five and a half.
I have one other thing before we go to the public question. Can you agree that all the requests? In the Matrix World Engineering Report of November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, will be agreed to by the applicant?
I think the only one that I mentioned before was the architectural plans. Um, and then the rest we will, you know, address. With, I think I've done it in my testimony here, but then the subsequent technical comments in the report will certainly be certain.
I would, I would have to interrupt just because there are. Because there's part of the matrix letter. Is not part of Collier's engineering. Um, for example, there will not be any architectural drawings submitted. Um, there are no tree removals contemplated. There is no variance um, being sought. Or uh, identified or designed with regard to the boulder wall that's coming down. Um, there are. The applicant did provide testimony concerning site conditions and the improvements. Um, I, there are no steep slope calculations that. Uh, from I understand that are related. Soil movement will happen and then you get into the grading and drainage plan, which um, we have. Materazzo is four point one, and then the rest would be um, Colliers. So I I think that to generically stay that everything in matrix's letter is gonna be complied with. Um, would be false because we're not doing some of the things that are there.
Then will you respond in a letter from your firm to Matrix or to the planning board uh, attorney? Uh, exactly what you will comply with and what is not going to be done because such as if you're, if the wall's coming down, you're not seeking a variance. So that would be, that would be the answer to that question. If there is no, if there's a landscaping plan, then there's a landscaping plan. So you would say the, you would have to respond. So the the question is, will you respond to every issue? In their uh, letter, so we have per completeness. Does that make sense?
Yes, we will respond to every item in their letter, but there will not be an engineering address every item in the letter. Because there are items that are inapplicable to the matter that's before the board. Yes.
And then you are at, or your and or your engineer will say these are inapplicable. And that will be responded uh, to the board uh, attorney, and she will provide that to Matrix, and they will. Either accept it or ask for more comment.
Right, and my letter will go and follow matrices. If it's a legal decision, I'll give it. If it's say four point two. And Collier's responds, my answer will be see revised plan. Or see revised report, and I identify where that is. Yes, you are correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. McGovern, does that make sense? Is that acceptable?
That that sounds fine to me.
I I like when I get everybody to agree. I feel so good.
Especially when it's two attorneys. You really have double points tonight.
God, I will go buy a lottery ticket tomorrow.
We don't know that the engineers are actually gonna agree, but we.
Well, I'm I'm halfway, I'm halfway home. I'm halfway home.
Okay.
Hey, um. And the same thing with the uh, the initial Wayne Group, things that can be. Applied, you will say they are applied and things that are not applicable, you will say are not applicable. Is that correct? Will that be acceptable?
Um, yes, I will do that.
Excellent, okay. So now for members of the public, do any members of the public, I I'm sorry, Mr. Simon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, I have a ton of questions for this witness. It's ten fifty, I should, I should get going.
Get going, say, talk fast.
No, we're not gonna. No, ask your questions, don't worry about that.
Mr. Simon, ask your questions. Don't worry about it. You take your time.
I will. Okay, um, Mr. Coakley, good uh, good evening. With regard to, so you understand that. This application was um, triggered based on disturbance of over one acre of land, correct? Okay, um, and by the way. Are you familiar with the West Orange ordinance? Did you review it prior to your testimony to see, actually prior to you preparing your plans?
Yes.
And. Do you believe that the applicant? Has fully complied with all obligations set forth in that ordinance pertaining to this application?
I can only speak to the stormwater regulations as it pertains to major development. That's what our plans cover, and that's what my report covers.
Okay, you also prepared as part of your plans. A zoning table, correct?
We do have a zoning table on our plans.
Right, and and you prepared that zoning table on pages three of eight, correct?
Correct.
And the information that's contained in that zoning table, you you um. Reviewed that information and you obtained it?
Correct. I mean, it's it's based off of the ASBILT survey that's referenced on our plans done by another firm.
So did you independently, Mr. Coakley, look at any of those? Numbers, figures independently? And put them on your own zoning table that you sign and sealed?
I mean, my engineering firm, my staff and I, yes, reviewed the plans.
You reviewed that, okay. And um. Actually, on pages, page three of eight. Uh, note number five, it says that the boundary and topographic information. Based on boundary and topographic survey prepared by Omlin and Osterborn. Dated May twenty second, twenty twenty four, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, did you do any independent investigation regarding boundary or topographic information? That is shown on your plans?
No.
In number six of your general notes on pages three of eight. It states, this plan was prepared for the purpose of direct depicting a potential layout. On this property and was completed without the benefit of detailed engineering. And environmental evaluations, local code review and storm stormwater management. Controls, period. Additional due diligence will be required to ensure the depicted concept. Is constructable, period. The gross square footage, GSF, shown is not guaranteed. It may require reduction as further evidence is discovered throughout the review and approval process. Period. As such, this plan is for conceptual purposes only. And not for construction. Mr. Coakley, did I accurately read general note number six? On page three of eight of your layout plan that you signed and sealed, sir?
Yes.
And. Would you agree that for purposes of submitting? This application before this board, that it required certain information to be provided to the board? Do you recall that from the ordinance?
Uh, I you'd have to be more specific. I don't know.
Okay, I will be more specific. Do you recall that one of the requirements for this application? Is a topographic base map of the site? Which extends a minimum, minimum of two hundred feet beyond the limits of the proposed development. Showing two foot contour intervals?
Can I ask you what you're referring to, Mr. Simon?
I am. I'm referring to in the stormwater management. Ordinance and in the steep slope ordinance, there are requirements that an applicant. Needs to provide to the board so the board can make an informed decision. Based on the information that is required in the ordinance. And I am asking the witness specifically, I have a whole bunch of questions just on this one topic. As to the information that we respectfully believe was not provided. Incident to this application so that the board could make an informed decision on the application and that the public has the opportunity. To fairly review and question the applicant's witnesses.
Can you please tell me what section of the code you are referring to? That was my question.
Yeah, it's either in section twenty eight or twenty nine, twenty five dash twenty eight or twenty five dash twenty nine. I'd be more than happy, um, just like you're gonna be providing me with documentation that Mr. Cohen referred to.
No, I have the, I have the code. Mr. Simon, all I'm asking you for, not a speech. I'm asking you for what you're referring to.
Excuse me, do you want me to take the time? And look for in in the steep slope ordinance? Well, let me ask the the witness a question this way. Do you recall in the ordinance a requirement to show? Um, topography, a minimum of two hundred feet beyond the limits of the proposed development, yes or no?
I don't know.
I don't recall that specific.
Okay, next question. Um, do you recall whether the ordinance requires a showing of? Steep slope slope disturbances on your plans?
If these were included in the um. Checklist, I mean, we were obviously deemed complete.
So I didn't ask you whether you were deemed complete or not deemed complete. I'm asking you whether you recall. Whether part of the submission requirements for this application include identification? Of steep slope disturbance for this property. Do you recall that?
I mean, we have the calculation on our plan here.
Right, you do have a calculation. When you say you have a calculation, sir, what are you referring to?
The the note here, the calculated reduced lot area.
Right, so so you're on on pages, we can jump around, that's fine. On page three of eight layout plan, you're referring to. I believe note one, right under your table bulk requirements, and it says. Calculated reduced lot area excluding. Six thousand five hundred and ninety two square feet of steep slope areas. Do you see that on your plan?
I do.
You prepared that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, can you identify for me, um, and I'd be happy if you could refer to your plan? And specifically your grading and drainage plan, where did you depict? The six thousand five hundred and ninety two square feet of steep slope areas?
Uh, I don't believe it's on the plan because we're, it's it's not on there, but we can.
Okay, did you, sir, did you um, submit to the board? Any methodology of how you calculated the six thousand five hundred and ninety two square feet of steep slope disturbance?
No.
Um, do you recall that in the ordinance? Particularly the steep slope ordinance, that there are um. Various definitions of steep slopes, critical slopes, based on the percentage of slope. Do you recall that, sir?
Yeah, I believe it's broken down into different. Yeah, ranges.
Right, and 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 do you also recall, and I'll get to this a little later, but since you raised it now. Do you recall the fact that there are different um. Categories of slope that relate to reduction in. Minimum lot area and minimum lot area per unit as calculated under the West Orange Township ordinance for the R one zone?
I I remember there's a a table, I think, yeah.
Right, right. Did you review that table? In coming up with your calculation of six thousand five hundred and ninety two square feet of steep slope disturbance?
I I don't recall. I don't.
And and with regard to your um, bulk table, let's start with um, minimum lot area. It says that.
Mr. Simon, I I interrupt, but we're at two minutes to eleven. And uh, I I hate to interrupt your train of thoughts going well, but we're gonna have to uh, adjourn to another meeting and carry this.
That's that's why I, uh, yes, okay, thank you.
But I wanted to get you started anyway.
Can I, can I, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, can I make a um? A a request before we could talk about the documents?
Go right ahead.
And so. You know, obviously, I'm an advocate representing Llewellyn Park here.
Yes, sir.
Um, I do work all over the place, including representing a bunch of boards. And in this type of application. Um, frankly, based on all the questioning that I'm hearing in the testimony being provided. It seems to me that what would be appropriate for this application would be a site visit. A an organized notice site visit with the board, with the public. Where the members of the board and the public and the professionals and and we have retained Eric Keller from Bowman Engineering. With regard to this project, to be able to together walk the site and have Mr. Coakley point out. Uh, various aspects of where the stormwater management system is going and not going and where pipes are going that weren't showing on the plan. I think in with all due respect to everyone involved in this, that this application cries out for a site visit. For the benefit of everyone here, because obviously the concern, the main concern here is water. It's concern of everyone, should be concerned of Mr. Cohen too. And for the board and the board professionals to in real time, get a firsthand view of what's going on on the site. And this ditch and the thirty six inch pipe, I think would benefit. Everyone who has participated and has um, observed this hearing.
And and and.
And I would, I would like.
Oh, well, wait a second, one at a time, one at a time. Mr. Yola, go right ahead.
Okay. I would like to say that this was a standard and ordinary application. There was a permission signed if a board member wanted to go to the site. We can tell you that the site has been walked multiple times by multiple people in West Orange, including the boards. Um, engineer, Mr. Scott. Uh, we're not going to stop this process and have a uh, a little seminar on. Drainage for this property. This is a single site. The purpose of this application is a stormwater management plan for the site. Um, this is morphing into Llewellyn Park and their. Um, this is morphing into Llewellyn Park and their concern about water coming from Crystal Point. I think it's unfair to the applicant and I would object to Mr. Simon's requests for a field trip.
Okay, you want to hear my response?
Sure.
Thank you, okay, Mr. Simon, I think it's a great idea. However, having said that, um, the app, we have, uh, and we have for, I've been sitting on the board twenty years, uh, the members of the planning board can at their will make a site plan visit. Having the members of the public go there does not offer anything to the uh information that the board needs to hear from the engineers and relation to the ordinances. So uh, I'm going to say no. Uh, but any member of the board, as Mr. Ella said, can contact the applicant and at an approved time, go there in less than three members of the board at the time, which is consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act. Um, and we can see what we need to see. But I, I understand what you're asking, uh, i- I have found that it does not add any understanding to the board having groups of people that are outside the board and uh the understanding of everything for us comes from our engineers and our experts. So that's my, that's my ruling. Uh, Ms. McGovern, is that reasonable?
Um, yes, but I don't want the board members to chat with the applicant. You, you know, you have to, it's private property, so you have to make some arrangements to get buzzed in, but otherwise no conversation with the applicant.
No comment, we have applicant or any other members of the public. No decisions will be made prior to the full board hearing, hearing the full application. Okay, um, having said that.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can I, this is also asked that um, as I maybe commented on earlier, um, certainly we respectfully ask that the applicant uh provide to us uh copies of the other documentation um relating to this, what I'm going to call the construction project, including but not limited to what Mr. Cohen testified to earlier this evening. And certainly we also would respectfully ask that to the extent that there are communications um between the board, the board professionals and the applicant, that we just be, we copied on them, that's, that's all.
Okay, what I'm going to do is, Ms. McGovern, I will ask you to be the conduit, Mr. Simon will send you the request, you'll send the request to Mr. Triolo, Mr. Triolo will respond uh either yea or reasons of nay, does that make sense?
Sure.
Perfectly fine.
Yeah, I, I can facilitate that and if there's any problems, we'll, we'll let each other know and we can figure out what to do after that. Um, I also, okay.
Go ahead, you first.
I, I was just going to say if any board member, if you're, you're heading up there, if you haven't already gone up there and you want to, you know, shoot me an email, we, I think we can get somebody from uh the code office to like an inspector or something to, to help facilitate that as well. Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
Need another meeting date for this.
Uh, well, Mr. Simon, Mr. Triolo, will this, will February fifth, our next regular meeting at seven thirty via Zoom be good for you, uh, both of you?
Yes.
Just can you hold on one second?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, yeah, so I'm um board attorney for another municipality and we have a meeting on, on the fifth. Um, what's the next meeting after that or unless there's a special meeting possible? I mean, I'm not suggesting, you know, just.
With the board members, a lot of special meetings coming up, we have another one next week and then there, there's going to be a lot of other ones. So um, for another application that we've got.
Oh, and, and actually I just got, I have um just got a text from Mr. Keller, um, my engineer, that he is not available on the fifth either of February.
Okay, I'm uh, I'm open. Could we have a second, do we have a time for second uh special in February after the uh?
How does February twelfth work for people?
Do any members of the board have a conflict with February twelfth, Wednesday evening, February twelfth via Zoom? And Mr. Triolo, would February twelfth be good for you and the applicant?
Yes.
And your expert?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that is good for me. Um, I'm speaking so that maybe Mr. Keller can let me know if the twelfth who's listening and if that works for him. Um.
Mr. Scott, does that work for you? That's a yes.
I, I'm checking with the code official right now if a special meeting can ha- happen on that date, okay?
Yes.
Jesse, you're okay?
Uh, Mi- Mr. Keller um just texted me that he has to check on the twelfth because he has another meeting tentatively, but he might be able to move that.
Okay.
He should move it.
Thank you.
And you can tell him, and you can tell, and you can tell him I said so.
Gemma, let her, you know.
Um, can, can you actually um permit Mr. Keller to, to enter so that he could be part of the scheduling conversation? And then Ms. Triola can speak.
Sure, I can, Tom to raise his hand, please.
Yes, Eric, can you raise your hand?
I'll promote you.
I see him. Promoting him now.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Sure thing.
Ms. McGovern, was that okay with uh the code official?
He's asking if we could do it tomorrow, but I, I think we have to, to, to preserve notice, we have to carry it from tonight. So the other option would be to carry it to the fifth and then carry it again to the twelfth, but it kind of puts us behind the gun to get the town notice for a special meeting. So I really would like to do this tonight if we can.
Eric, you have to unmute yourself, please.
Now you can all see me and hear me.
Yes, there's Mr. Keller.
Hey, Eric.
Hi, Priscilla.
How you doing?
Good, I, I would love to change, move the twelfth, but I'm not sure I can. It's a, a, a application has been carried for a while and I have to, I have to find out. And the following week I'm on vacation. February is a busy month.
Um, unfortunately, we have some time constraints with this application as well.
Understood.
Um, one suggestion, which I'm sure you've already thought of, is that assuming that the room is available on the twelfth and special meeting notice can be accommodated, that, you know, between my cross-examination and any questions from other members of the public um and, and follow-up from the board and the board professionals, that may, that may take some time. And so that even if there's a, a third meeting, which would involve potentially Mr. Keller's testimony, that could be relatively short, we will have, you know, not in essence wasted and, but rather um got a lot done on the twelfth, even if Mr. Keller's not available.
Maybe we can have Mr. Keller submit his comments to the board and to Mr. Scott so we can all focus on what his issues are so we could abbreviate some of the hearings. But I don't believe that it would be necessary or advisable to go to a third meeting.
Yeah, and I, I, I take issue with any witness, either applicant or objector submitting testimony and writing.
I'm not asking for his testimony, I'm asking, just like Mr. Scott did a review and, and um provided his comments, so maybe Mr. Keller should do that so that we're all on the same page. This is not supposed to be a contest. This is a planning board application to allow a resident to put a stormwater management system on his property. It's not an application to cure Crystal Point.
We, we got it, we got it, Mr. Simon?
Yep, so um, I think in, in fairness, where we can go here is that, first of all, I want to talk offline to Mr. Keller, number one. Number two, I think Mr. Keller would need to have the benefit of the answers to all of my questions from Mr. Coakley uh before he provides, you know, certainly the extent of his comments as well as um receiving and reviewing the response that to the board engineers uh last review memo that we understand is going to be in the works between now and the next meeting.
So I just want to ask one, Mr. Simon, I just want to ask one question.
Yeah.
If, if for, if for some reason that the water runoff to Llewellyn Park is obviated in whatever form, it's, it's taken care of, doesn't happen anymore, mitigated totally, i- is this the thrust of what everybody's talking about?
Well, I, I mean, in terms of the thrust, look, it's a development application.
Yes.
And I'm not trying to, to be cute or, you know.
No, no, I got it, I got it.
But, uh, you know, certainly, and I think I, I mentioned it, Mr. Chairman, a couple of minutes ago, that water to Llewellyn Park is, you know, one, two and three in terms of the concerns for sure. Are there other concerns? Yes, they are, but they all have to do with issues of erosion, steep slope disturbance, water runoff and the.
Yes, yes, okay, so if steep slope disturbance and water runoff in some way could be mitigated by the applicant and of, and or others, this would make a lot of sense prior to the next meeting.
Sure, if there's going to be, and you know, and this is why. You know, I understand you, you, the chairman's uh ruling is done, but you know, that's exactly why in these kind of, you know, what I call water cases, right, and steep slope disturbance cases, that, you know, the, the best thing to do is to have these site visits so that the parties can, you know, maybe come up, you know, there are a lot of smart people on the Zoom call and maybe come up with a plan of, of attack and, and resolution to make everyone happy.
Right, see, that's why I ask these questions because I'm not that smart, but I know the people on the Zoom are. Okay, in any case, so when have we come up with our next meeting, ladies and gentlemen?
February twelfth.
Would do we all, are we in agreement with February twelfth?
Mr. Simon, are you okay with that?
Well, subject to, you know, Mr. Keller's availability.
I think maybe you find another engineer because we have to move it along. We, we have two, we have another application that's got more special meetings at the end of the month. And I'm unavailable the Wednesday, the nineteenth, because I have another meeting that I've committed to a long time ago.
Bowman is a big firm.
Every Wednesday is taken up by this board and in fact, they're going to hear that they're going to be asked to do a double session on another application at the end of the month. So they're volunteers, we have to get this down so that the notice can go out.
Okay, at this moment, I'm going to say February twelfth. So ladies and gentlemen, this, this application will be carried without further notice to uh special meeting on February twelfth, seven thirty PM via Zoom. The next regular planning board meeting will be February fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty PM via Zoom. And we have the next special meeting will be January twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM in person at Town Hall.
Whoa.
Oh, what?
I said, whoa, it's in person.
Yes, they, they got me. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Klein seconds, Mr. Vice Chairman makes the motion, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. The eyes have it, the eyes are above the nose, thank you very much, I appreciate it, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night, all.